And welcome to Wednesday, April 13th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. A meeting was held at 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers of City Hall for clarification of the agenda. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the Chair. If a citizen wishes to read any documentations of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the Chair. There will be a three-minute time limitation for presentations to the commission. Agenda item number one is roll call. Aislinn, will you please call a roll?
Crystal, Chanda?
I'm here, and I did some preliminary work for Agenda Item Number Four, but the plan had changed and we are no longer doing any work on this.
Any site visits?
Oh, and I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Six, and I have nothing else to disclose.
Marjana Hewitt?
I am here. I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Six. I also received communication from someone who contacted me with general questions. I didn't realize it was about this Agenda Item until she followed up with more specific questions. I submitted those, my response and the original questions as submissions as part of the correspondence that was put before the commission tonight, so those are all, should be entered as part of the public record as well.
And you said no site visits?
I visited Site Number Six, Agenda Item Number Six.
Present, I made a site visit to Agenda Items Three through Eight, and I did make a visit outside of my role as a commission member to Agenda Item Number Four about seven days ago to discuss purchasing some equipment that has been stored on that property, but it will not be a conflict of interest, so I will not be recusing myself from voting on that Agenda Item.
Chingy Ru?
Present, I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Three, Agenda Item Number Six, Agenda Item Number Seven, Eight, and Nine, and I have nothing else to disclose.
Dakota Warhol?
I'm here. I made a site visit to Agenda Items Four, Five, and Six. Nothing else to disclose.
Thank you. And we have what is going to need Robert's excuse this evening?
Thank you, Aislinn. Agenda Item Number Two is approval of the minutes. The commission may wish to approve the minutes from the clarification and regular meetings from the March 23rd meeting. Is there any discussion by the commission about these meeting minutes?
It's March 9th and 23rd.
Oh, March 9th and 23rd, thank you, Aislinn. With that, I would like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass the approval of the minutes.
Second?
Of a motion by Ru and a second by Phillips. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Ru?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Hewitt?
Yes.
Warhol?
Yes.
Motion, Chair.
We will now move on to the public hearing portions on the agenda. I would like to explain the procedures to everybody. If everybody could please silence their cellphones, that would be appreciated. There is a 10-minute limit on the application's presentation. There is a three-minute limit on the public testimony. Names are required for those presenting and testifying. Questions and comments should be pertinent to the application and be addressed to the commission. As this is a public hearing, there should be no questions, comments, or applause from the audience. Should the meeting go later than 8:00, the commission may take a scheduled 10-minute break. Commission members must make their decision regarding the application on facts already in record and information presented at the public hearing. Conflicts of interest, site visits, and ex parte contact by the commission were all Protocol requires that commission members and the audience be recognized by the Chair before speaking. And with that, we will go on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is a public hearing for a conditional use permit filed 22-816. I now declare this public hearing open, and I would like to invite the applicant to come to the podium. Is there anybody here from the Fishing Game?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't have the agenda.
Oh, nope, you're good.
Good evening. My name is Zach Lockyer. I'm a Regional Wildlife Manager with Idaho Fishing Game. I work out of the office here in Pocatello at 1345 Barton Road. We are proposing to expand the existing equipment storage facility on Wildlife Way just below our primary office. We're proposing to expand that by 35% and also improve the security fencing around the compound and install a storage shed similar in size to the existing shed. This will require some grade fill and earth moving, given the existing slope of the land. The reasoning for this is the current storage yard is not sufficient to encompass the growth our agency has incurred over the past 20 years. We are currently storing equipment and materials in our paved parking lot at the regional office, which takes up limited space for staff and customers. Sometimes that creates conflicts when we have a lot of folks at the office. We've also experienced some thefts from the existing storage compound because the fencing is currently not functioning properly, so the increased security with added fencing and then locking roll-up doors on the shed should help with future theft. If this approved, this project will increase our storage footprint by 35% over current conditions, which is consistent with the administrative provisions for existing legal non-conforming use, which specifies no more than a 50% expansion. This proposed expansion meets the infill development concept of the city's comprehensive plan. Use within this new expansion will be identical to our current use, so no additional impact to surrounding landowners. The new storage shed will face the interstate, should be more aesthetically pleasing compared to the existing shed, and keep equipment and clutter out of the public eye. So all told, the improvements will allow us to improve security, will allow us to condense storage in a single, more secure location, and will free up parking in our main lot to better serve our public. I'll stand for questions.
Okay. Commission, any questions for the applicant? No? Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite staff.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Jim Anglesey, Long Range Planner for the City of Pocatello. The request before you is a conditional use permit at 1345 Barton Road to allow the expansion of a legal non-conforming outdoor storage facility along Wildlife Way. The subject property is zoned residential, commercial, professional, which does not permit outdoor storage facilities. Expansion of a legal non-conforming use is permitted up to 50% of the current area throughout the CUP process. The applicant is proposing to expand the use by 35%, and due to the facility being located adjacent to a residential zone, the facility would require screening, so the facility would not be visible from the street, and would also require a transitional landscape buffer. Landscape improvements would also be required. The applicant is proposing that the landscaping along Wildlife Way, as well as the transitional landscape buffer, be revegetated with native wheatgrass. Additionally, water is not readily available on the portion of the land where the maintenance yard is located. Where requiring screening would not be effective in its purpose, seeing that the yard would be visible from Interstate 15 due to change in grade. And so, in order for them to circumvent those, the commission is able to waive those requirements and landscaping requirement through this process. The facility is located along Wildlife Way and surrounded by undeveloped land. The nearest development is approximately 600 feet from the maintenance yard and includes Fishing Game Regional Office and residential development. Interstate 15 is also located to the west. Outdoor storage, like I've said, is not permitted, except through this expansion provision in code. Notification for this hearing has met all state requirements, and only one written comment has been received by staff, which you have already received. And in conclusion, staff finds that the proposal is compliant with city standards, assuming the conditions as listed here and in the staff report are met. And this ends my presentation. If the commission has any questions, I would take those.
So what exactly does legal non-conforming mean? How does something become, not be non-conforming, but also be legal?
So it was permitted previously, but the current standards don't allow it.
Okay, so it wasn't built illegally, it was legally built, but it doesn't conform to current standards?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. And then at this time, I will just make sure that there has not been any written correspondence submitted besides the one we received. Thank you. So I just want to remind everybody, when you come forward, please state your name. Remember that you're addressing the commission, and you only have three minutes. At this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony supporting the application to come forward. Anyone uncommitted to the application?
Hello, Commissioner, I'm Joe Yaman. I live at 3258 Wildlife Way. I'm the Little White House just down the road from the yard. I've been there, oh, about 22, 23 years now, and I just have a couple of basic questions. I seen the sign posted. One, if any of that land was involved with the transfer that they're talking about improving from Brad Fraser, that occurred four or five years ago? And two, if a conditional use permit is approved, does that raise the propensity level of Brad Fraser being able to put in multi-use apartments in that area around that land? We had a big deal about four or five years ago. It's currently zoned residential or low-density residential, and Brad Fraser wanted to increase the zoning to multi-unit housings or something, and it was a big to-do down in the neighborhood a while back. So I just want to make sure, that's why I'm here. It's not that I'm against it or for it, you know, I wanted to see the plans, but I just wanted to make sure that for future use, was any of that land that they're going to develop involved with the trade that Brad Fraser had with them? And then also, does that raise the propensity level of Brad Fraser maybe being successful in a future planning and zoning application?
So approval of this would be specifically just for this new storage unit to be built and the grading required for it?
Okay.
They would have to come back for another one if they were to want to build another unit, so it's all it's for and nothing else?
Okay.
Staff, would you add anything to that?
No.
Okay, so hopefully that answers your questions.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else uncommitted? Anyone opposed? So with that, applicant, would you like to rebuttal anything? Okay. So with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Commission, questions, discussion, motion?
I would like to make a motion, Madam Chair. I move to approve the conditional use permit application from Idaho Department of Fishing Game for the expansion of outdoor storage in the residential, commercial, professional zoning district at 1345 Barton Road, finding that the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 1702130 of Pocatello Municipal Code with conditions listed in the staff report, and authorize the Chair to sign the findings effect.
Second?
I have a motion by Hewitt, a second by Warhol. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Hewitt?
Yes.
Warhol?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Ru?
Yes.
Motion, Chair.
Thank you. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Four, a public hearing conditional use permit filed 22-237. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Capital Line Holdings, PLLC, for a conditional use permit to allow a storage facility in a commercial general zoning district at 746 and 762 McKinley Avenue. I will now declare the public hearing open, and at this time, I would invite the applicant to come forward.
Thanks for your time tonight, and thanks for the continuance last time, giving a little time to get organized. I'm really excited for this project. I think it's going to be a great asset to the community, especially with the current housing market and the state that it's in. Seems like a lot of people are moving in with their parents or condensing houses, and our storage demand is actually increasing. We've also done some other feasibility studies, and obviously, there's a great need for storage. Most facilities are over 95% to 98% of capacity, so there's definitely a need. And the other benefit here is we're taking an existing, I would probably say illegal RV storage facility and improving it dramatically. When I bought that land, it was, there was literally a breaking bad situation there. There was a guy living in his hotel. We had the cops called on him. He was beating his wife, and those are things that we don't want to see in our community, so we'd like to clean up our area and bring in a Class 8 facility for the community. I think it fits well with the surrounding features. I mean, we pretty much own the whole block there already, so this is a nice infill project. We're going to be able to increase our security and just really tighten up our ship over there, so it's going to be a good project for the city, and I'd like to turn the rest of the time over to my attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jared Fluke here from Racine Olson Law Firm. Here on behalf of the applicant. Mostly, I'm here to respond to any concerns that you may have, and also those concerns that were raised by Ms. Zoho's that was submitted to the commission previously. So I'm going to try to get through each of those concerns that were raised and address them in turn. In the first paragraph, she mentions that she's concerned about the proximity of her residential structures to the storage facility because she felt like there wasn't any regulation about what kinds of materials or dangerous substances might be stored or permitted in these facilities. In response to that, the applicant does require all of the tenants to sign a lease agreement to get into a storage unit, and one of the provisions of the lease agreement specifically prohibits, it says, quote, "No explosives, highly flammable materials, hazardous goods or substances whose storage or use contravenes applicable law." Obviously, the applicant doesn't want any of that kind of stuff in his storage facilities. The applicant does carry commercial property insurance on the facility that also prohibits that type of stuff, so the applicant is doing everything within his power to try to regulate This requirement that the tenant sign this lease arguably adds additional protection for Ms. Zoho's because she wouldn't have that assurance to some other type of use or, you know, property owner that went in there. So the other concern she raised in that paragraph one has to do with the accessibility of emergency vehicles to the property. In the staff report on page three, they've addressed this. They've suggested or recommended that the applicant work with the other city departments, specifically the fire department, to deal with turning radius, ingress and egress, accessibility to fire hydrants and other suppression systems. And the applicant, of course, is planning on doing that, he's willing to do that, and that will be part of the process before he gets a building permit. In the second paragraph, one of the concerns this raised has to do with the long road on the southeast side. They are concerned about stray vehicles running loose and crossing the southern boundary of the property into Ms. Zoho's northern boundary of her property. The proposed use will be building buildings through most of that southern and northern property boundary, and there will be fencing in there. So again, arguably, her buildings will be more protected by these buildings that will act as an obstruction between, from any runaway vehicles, so to speak. And as the staff report indicated in this, that this proposed use is in no way increasing the traffic burden that Ms. Zoho's would have to her property anyway. In her, in third paragraph, she talks about the non-connective roads in the southwest corner between buildings 900 and 1,000. I'm not sure if I completely understand her concern in this, but what I think she's wanting is that she's concerned about there being, that turning into a through street for access. In response to that, this whole property is going to be fenced off. There will only be two accesses to it, which are both on the west side on McKinley Avenue. There won't be any through traffic allowed between those buildings, 900 and 1,000. In paragraph four, she requests that additional traffic study be undertaken. It's true that the Local Land Use Act does allow you and give you the discretion as a commission to request additional studies, whether it be traffic or environmental impact or whatever the nature may be. But I think that there needs to be shown merit for why that should be required, and the staff report already suggested that this proposed use will not increase the study. It's already been mentioned in the clarification meeting that these types of uses draw very little traffic. The applicant estimates that it's about 15 trips per day with probably none at night because the units are not lighted inside the storage units, and most people like to be able to see when they're loading and unloading what they're doing. So there's very little nighttime traffic to these. So we would request that you not require an additional traffic study on this intersection, also because Ms. Zoho's property is accessed from Cedar and not from McKinley, where the only two accesses to this property will be located. And in the last paragraph, five, Ms. Zoho's request mediation. The statements that counsel for the city gave during the clarification meeting, I think, are fairly correct. That is totally discretionary for the commission. It's not a prerequisite for approving or denying the permit. You can do that independent of it. To clarify one thing from his remarks, I do believe that the city is required to pay for that mediation. There's not really any case law Idaho precedent on that where this has come up, but the statutory language makes it clear that the commission is responsible for selecting and paying for the mediator. Again, we feel like that's unnecessary because the staff report really addresses all of the concerns that were raised by Ms. Zoho's. So I guess in conclusion from my comments, we feel like that this proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's consistent with the commercial general zoning as a conditionally permitted use, it's consistent with the zoning requirements, and for these reasons, we would ask that you approve it based on the staff's recommendation with the conditions that they've suggested. Mr. Hartman is, you know, obviously making an investment in our community, he's helping to meet a need that is proven to be needed in this market, and he is going to be working with all other city departments to address any of these concerns. So with that, I'll save the remainder of my time for any questions, if you have any.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I would invite staff to come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Carl Anderson. I'm a senior planner with the City of Pocatello Planning Department, for the record. So as previously stated, tonight you have before you a conditional use request to allow for self-service storage as defined by our code in the commercial general zoning district located at 746 McKinley Avenue. The applicant is Skylar Hartman of Capital Line Holdings, PLLC. So just some general background for the commission. The request is for the conditional use to allow storage in commercial general zoning district, as previously stated. As proposed, there will be a maximum of 352 storage units, and the applicant has stated that one full-time employee will be on-site. The proposal includes two parcels, as shown here, for an area totaling 3.74 acres, more or less. The commission held a public hearing on this item on March 23rd at a special meeting. Following the public hearing, which was closed, the commission postponed the agenda item to the next meeting, which we're at here today. So just to reiterate, conditional uses are uses that are allowed within a zoning district provided that certain standards are met that will enhance compatibility of the proposed use and other surrounding uses. This has been noted for a public hearing tonight. Written public comment received as of the completion of the staff report is listed in Attachment C. That public comment was received and provided to the commission in advance of the last public hearing and provided during pre-agenda at the last meeting. I would like to reiterate something, too. The commission was notified regarding the Idaho statutes regarding mediation, Title 676510, during pre-agenda at the March 23 meeting, and again, today's pre-agenda. Staff did reach out to the applicant, who did decline mediation, but should the commission require mediation tonight, staff would recommend that they set a time or set a date for that mediation to occur, and I believe the city would be responsible for paying that mediation, so if that were the case, then perhaps city staff could be, somebody in city staff could serve as the mediator, whether that be somebody in the planning department or something like that. But something for the commission to consider as part of that mediation request. So just to kind of go through, I've got the site plans that were submitted as part of the application, the elevations. So first time with the laser pointer tonight. So you have the McKinley Avenue access, as shown here. Here is the office building that the applicant is proposing with some parking to serve the office building. The storage units are located in these buildings as listed as 200, 300, 400, and so forth, and here you'll see a key that provides some detail on the square footage of the storage units that they are proposing. There is a gate proposed here. Based on the plan shown, it does look like there's a fence shown here to the existing single-family home, which is considered legal non-conforming, where this area is zoned commercial general. And there does appear to be a gate shown here to the adjacent storage units, which are on the corner of McKinley, and I believe Cedar, the crust tree escapes me at the moment. This property is also owned by the applicant, so it does look like the access point would come through this property, based on that fence that looks to be fenced off between the adjacent residential use, and then there is access here on McKinley. As stated in the site report, so where this is a commercial general zoning district, there are many uses in the commercial general zoning district that would be permitted here. The CG zone does not require a transitional buffer from adjacent uses where, when they're, based on the use. It does require transitional buffers when they are zoned residential. The surrounding zoning for the property is also commercial general for the abutting parcels. Staff has not recommended a transitional buffer where you could have a use in the commercial general district permitted outright here that would not be required to have a transitional buffer. However, should the commission require it, staff would recommend that the area here adjacent to the railroad be reduced, and then that buffer would be required where those abutting residential uses are. That is within the staff report on page three. And just to clarify, you have a staff report summary, and then the previous staff report from the last hearing is attached with some additional attachments. from the last hearing is attached with some additional attachments. So more of the same. These lines here are contours, and I believe these arrows are intended to show kind of what the anticipated storm water flow will be. Just to reiterate, this would be required to go through the building permit process and would have to meet all city code requirements at the time of building permit. Elevations here, this is the office building that the applicant is proposing from McKinley, and the elevation is provided by the applicant. So at this time, staff's recommending, staff finds that the proposal is compliant with municipal code Title 17, not Title 16, with the conditions listed in the staff report. And I would like to reiterate, city code 1702130E authorized to grant, the hearing body may impose any conditions necessary to accomplish the following, as listed here. Should the commission require any of these additional studies or other conditions, I would also reference the criteria listed under the conditional use permit, the criteria for approval. So with that, I will do my best to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Go ahead.
It was not entirely clear to me which property Ms. Zojos owns. Can you show me on a map? Is she adjacent, does she live on Cedar? Does she?
The properties that I'm aware of are here on Cedar. I do believe Ms. Zojos is here as well.
I didn't know if that was.
I looked it up on the parcel viewer.
Yeah, I do believe it's these parcels here. I'm not sure if there are any others that are.
Okay.
Carl, the only question that I had was about, it says that you're recommending that the transitional buffer be used abutting the residential uses but not requiring it. What would be your, what would be the main reason that you'd like to see it there?
So again, where this is a use that could be permitted outright, not, not this specific use, let me backtrack. There are other uses in the commercial general zoning district that could be permitted outright that would not require the transitional buffer. For example, like an automotive repair shop, that would not require that transitional buffer. Now here, what I'm saying here is that while it's not required, staff recommends that the applicant consider reducing the existing tree landscape area here. Where these trees, there are several that are existing. There's also an irrigation line here that the applicant will need to address, which is contained in the staff conditions here. It's possible that some of this could be pulled back from some of the existing residential uses to create a little bit more space between those uses and reduce this area here and provide a little bit more separation from those existing uses. But again, staff's not requiring it because, again, this is a use that could be permitted, or there are uses that could be permitted outright, like, like, again, an automotive repair shop that would not require that buffer. It's here for the application to consider, and the commission could include that condition as well.
This was all, this conditional use permit was already approved at one time, and then the time limit just ran out, correct?
The time limit ran out, and I'm going off memory, some of this is several months old in my brain at this point. I do also believe that the applicant increased the number of units. I don't remember by the specific amount. So yes, it did expire, and also it got larger as far as the number of units. That may be, for clarification on how much larger, that would be a question asked by the applicant.
But the use was approved.
The use was approved, yeah.
These single-family homes that abut the property line are legal non-conforming now, correct?
They're not single-family, are they?
I believe they are.
So I think there's a mix of some single-family through here and some apartments through here. So I believe.
Or either single-family, but these are duplexes.
I believe this is a single-family without going into, I can't say with 100% sure certainty that it's a single-family or more, but the residential use is adjacent to it. Commercial general does not permit residential uses outright unless a commercial storefront is established.
So when they were built, that ground was probably allowed for residential use?
Without going back and looking at the history of that, it's likely that they're legal non-conforming, but I can't verify that without actually doing the research on each individual property.
Thank you.
Carl, from the written correspondence, I'll just read this. Interior road designs do not appear to allow large vehicles such as ladder trucks and pumpers to maneuver safely within the area if one or more vehicles are present. Looking at the drawing that we've gotten, I show the smallest roadway to be about 26, I think that's really small, I think 26 foot in width. Does that present an issue?
I'm not a fire department representative, so most of those widths for circulation are per fire department standards. The fire department did provide comments in response to the agenda item, which was received on March 23rd and provided to the commission at pre-agenda on that day.
To which they said it looks like the only issue is fire hydrants.
There are other things, other comments in there, and those are attached to the minutes of today's.
I know 24 feet dry vial is allowed.
Right.
So.
Okay. Yeah. So I think some of those things might be looking at. Some of the turn radiuses through here and things like that. But again, the fire department did review that, and they did not call that out as an area concern. Yeah. Thank you.
I have another question for you. So I was not, so there are storage units already located on the corner of McKinley and Cedar, and apparently they're owned by the applicant. So why, and you say there's, it looks like there's going to be a gate that goes in, is from that drawing?
From the drawing submitted.
From the drawing between 1,000 and 900, the units, is, does staff have any issue with connecting those? Does there have to be a gate there? Can those be connected? Does, is?
Opening?
Yeah, could it be open? Or do you, this is drawn with a fence all the way around it. If there's a gate there, I need to better understand. So is staff's understanding that there could be permitted travel between those two properties? I mean, if there's a gate there?
So, so these two properties adjacent, again, would be owned by the applicant?
Yes.
So that would be internal circulation to access these storage units, and this would be internal circulation to access the proposed storage units.
Okay.
It looks like there's a gate there. The applicant would have to answer as far as how that.
What they intend to do with it, but.
And how that gate would be controlled.
Staff doesn't care if there's a gate there or not.
I don't, and I don't believe fire had the requirement for secondary access either, but I, planning, no.
Okay. And then the second question I have has to do with the house that's on, because we're looking at this, the drawing includes this house at 746 McKinley, right there. It's owned by them, too, but that's not going to be part of the storage.
That's not my, that's not my understanding.
Okay, so this thing has nothing to do with that, even though it's part of this map drawing.
Yeah, and in the staff, in the staff report, too, I do call out that the existing single-family home is, would.
It's legal non-conforming.
Be legal non-conforming, and should they desire to sell that separately, they would need to go through the appropriate substantive process.
All right, thank you. That's the last questions I have.
Any other questions for the staff? No? Okay. So at this time, I would just like to confirm that no further written correspondence has been received.
We received email today just regarding the city's processing of the public comments, pertinent mediation and a records request, but staff's understanding that it was not necessarily intended to be public comment.
Thank you. So at this time, I would invite anybody. Any other questions for Carl? No, thanks, Carl. At this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony supporting the application to come forward.
My name's Clay Heaney. I live at 838 McKinley. I think the project would be great. The only problem with that street is there's, there's not a storm drain. There's one at both ends, but there's, there's one by the daycare, but it's just a, just a dry one. It doesn't hook to the storm drain. So I'm just saying that there's a lot of water on that place, and it has no place to go. But.
Okay, I'll just let you know, per city code, they will be required to keep all storm water on-site, so it won't be leaving the site.
Yeah, I think it'll be a good thing, though.
Okay, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Ann Parker, and I am the current property manager on-site at Wildwood Storage. So I can talk firsthand a little bit about the need for storage in the community, as well as how it's expected to impact the community and the negative effects, if there were any, that I don't see. So only positive impact so far has been seen with the current storage facility, and we are in need of more. It's also really quiet, there's low traffic, and so, and like was mentioned before, I don't see that there's going to be any increased traffic, especially at night. So it shouldn't impact neighboring houses or apartments at all anymore than, you know, they're currently being impacted. It's also safe, and we do have security cameras, as well as the lease agreement, and I'm on-site 24/7. So in terms of like hazardous waste or things that are being stored that aren't allowed, we really do our best to mitigate that, and we haven't historically had any issues with that. We haven't had issues with safety, and there haven't been any issues with emergency access and being able to access the facility as-is. Also, in terms of the neighborhood itself, it's an aesthetically pleasing business, and we keep it clean, we keep garbage out. And so in terms of how wide it would be, like pretty much that entire block, I think that it would be a good thing for the street because things are kept looking nice and safe the whole time. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else supporting the application? Anyone against the application?
I am Artemis Zojos. I own the three duplexes that we're talking about. I oppose or want some fixings. The road that goes over here, the road that's right there that goes down, well, excuse me, will you show us the other picture where it shows my apartment? I'm not a professional at this, so I'm not a good talker.
These right there?
Yes, right there. Those are, those three are my duplexes. The duplex that sits out there in back, the road that's going to be in the storage sheds at nighttime, those headlights are going to be in my renters' bedrooms. I may not be able to rent my apartments if there's going to be lights in there when they're trying to sleep. I've got renters that sleep during the day because they work at night, and I've got renters that sleep at night. And so something needs to be fixed. The thing about cars running away, well, the gentleman here has not been here very many years. I've been there all my life. At the storage sheds there on Wildwood on the corner, there's been three times that people have driven into the storage sheds. One had an accident because he had a heart attack. The other one had an accident because they had put stuff in that was not legal, but nobody knew what was in there until it blew up. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed? No? At this time, I would give the applicant opportunity to rebuttal.
Sure. So I guess the buffering issue and why we're setback from the canal, there's an easement. So that's, that's the buffering. So there's not really an opportunity to push that back and remove the vegetation. So we figured we'd leave some vegetation and maximize our efficiencies. Speaking to, about headlights, our buildings are going to be blocking 98% to 99% of any headlight emissions.
How tall are you?
They're about 11 feet, 11, 12 feet. So I don't really see that as a driving concern. Of course, we want to, you know, listen to any neighbors and do what we can, but I really see that as marginal. I haven't historically heard of any explosions from 1990 till now. Maybe, maybe something has happened, but I would say we do get some damage on our buildings, typically on interior corners. We do put ballards there, bollards, cement ballards, and we'll do the same on building 800. So if there was a runaway vehicle, first they'd hit concrete barriers, then they'd hit the building, and that would give her much more safety per se than a chain link fence. So really, we're, we're adding safety in that concern. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a, I do have a couple more. So can you talk to me about the fencing that you plan to put around this facility? What's your plans for that and that gate issue I mentioned earlier?
Sure. Okay. Is this touchscreen? Nope. So, okay, there we go. Okay, so buildings 900 and 1,000, that is not supposed to be a gate there. So our intentions are to secure the, the facility on the corner of Cedar and McKinley. So we'll put in a decorative chain link, nice black chain link fence, restricting access from Cedar and only allowing access, another gate access point on McKinley. So that would be the building south of 1,000. And there's an approach or curb cut.
Okay.
Sir.
And then the fencing around the rest of the facility that you're proposing here?
So most of it, we have a semi-fortress style build, that's what they call that. So it's securing the perimeter with the buildings. So it's called a fortress, fortress style in the security or self-storage world. Any breaks will be the same high-quality black chain link fence.
Okay.
Mr. Hartman? So we've got this landscape buffer here backing up to the railroad slash kind of ditch. Your building is blocking slash obscuring roughly two-thirds of Mrs. Zojos'. And then you have this kind of small bit of open space here next to what appears to be like parking?
Seven and 800?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's our snow storage area, so we, we planned for some snow storage, so there's some vacancies there to push out snow.
Are you opposed to bringing this landscape buffer over just to meet the side of this building? Just in this area that you're talking about snow, snow storage?
We, so explain your, explain that a little better, please.
So right here in your bottom right-hand corner?
Okay.
The only part that's not obscuring her building?
Okay.
There's one-third of it. Would you consider bringing the landscape buffer over to meet your storage units?
In the snow.
Or we could push building 800 to the east, and that would take care of that.
And that's something you'd consider doing?
I'd love to do that.
Shift it over.
Yeah, we'll just put in three more units. That'll block all the light and any potential for a cardin go through there.
That's all my questions. Thank you, Crystal.
Okay, thank you. With that, I declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you.
Commission, any discussion? Commission, any discussion?
You know, I don't, I don't, I don't really think that this merits mediation. I, I think that the building mostly both protects and blocks headlights from her duplex. I, I think that if Mr. Hartman is willing to either, you know, commit to extending the landscape buffer, which would block headlights and stop cars from driving through, and provide some protection, or even commit to extending that building over, which would accomplish the same thing, I think that...
I think if you look at the way the car will be driving down that aisle, the way the building is, it's going to block it. There's not gonna be car headlights shining where there's not a building. They'd have to really sneak in there. I don't know that it's necessary to change it, you know what I mean?
Could be.
What if you were accessing the last two or three units on the south? I mean, I think for all intents and purposes, you're right, Crystal, but just, I think, what if you were accessing the last few units on building 700?
Or if you were parking and turning around, you'd, you might pull out, and headlights would get there as well. It, it just seems like an easy way to make all of the parties happy, and Mr. Hartman's already indicated he's happy to do it.
Yeah, I guess my concern would be what changes would need to be made if they're, want more units?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know if that was my cue, or not.
It was. Eye contact.
Okay. So the applicant has requested, I believe, 352 storage units at tonight's meeting. So if there's gonna be an increase in that, I would recommend that the commission be very clear as far as how many units we're talking about, because that can impact things like the required parking, and so forth. I don't remember how close they were on parking, that is, that is contained in the staff report. So there's a couple options. I think that you can address that. I think you can set that number, as far as what that would take, to, Commissioner Worrell, if I understand you, we're talking about extending this out here. Are you talking about connecting that fully?
Either, either extending the landscape buffer, so there's a tree there, or extending the building over to the existing landscape buffer. Yes, sir.
We're talking about building 800, correct?
Yeah, 800.
Yes. Yes, I'm talking about this, just a little area of dead space here on the bottom right.
My recommendation would be, be very clear as far as what you're requiring, as far as if that's a landscape buffer, or if that is to extend the storage units over. If it's to extend the storage units over, two off-the-cuff thoughts would be to be clear about how many units we're talking about. The applicant does have kind of a menu, as far as square footage and things like that, as far as what units they're proposing. Also, keep it at 352, and remove some units from somewhere else, as an alternative to that too, being another option. Now, any change to that too? The commission should be clear as far as if they want them to work with staff and attend another site plan review meeting, or if they would like them to bring that site plan back to the commission for review, things like that. I would just kind of consider as far as what that review process would, would look like for that revised site plan. Yeah, and then, you know, the commission may consider asking the affected party, as well as if that's something that they're amendable to. And then, one other thing I'd like to backtrack on from my presentation, if that, if I may, since I'm up here. While the other use, on the other application was approved for the use, should be noted that conditional use permits are site-specific, and so it's based on a different set of plans than what the commission has before them tonight, than what was previously approved. So this is a new application. I just would like to be clear about that.
Crystal, I just think my main concern is, right, like, so this, this use is conditionally permitted here, but not permitted outright, and who's to say what the reason is for that, right? So we're looking at the CG, and we're saying, hey, this isn't by code what's supposed to be here, but we might allow it if it's good for the area. While over here, we have these duplexes, which aren't supposed to be there either, yet they're there. And if this was zoned residential, there would have to be a buffer there. But just same as this isn't supposed to be storage units, this isn't supposed to be duplexes right now, but if we're treating this like storage units, we should probably treat this like residential.
And I'm not opposed to a buffer at all. I look at that, and I say, if I was renting those units on the end, and I had to go the length of what that building is, how am I gonna be able to get a U-Haul in there and unload it? You're gonna be carrying stuff for a ways, so maybe a tree is a better option.
I think so. Then we're not dealing with parking, we're not dealing with additional units, and really, it's, you know, it's the cost of one tree, and staff has already signaled they'd be willing to let them relocate trees from the existing buffer. I mean, they said that they were willing to let him...
Just add a tree, we don't need to relocate trees.
Yeah, no, I agree, but I'm just, if they were saying, hey, we literally don't have money to buy a new tree, they don't even need to, right, they've got one.
Looking at the aerial map, if you'll look just west of McKinley, I, I believe that's Roosevelt, I'm not entirely sure, it dead-ends there into Cedar, right, just to the west, right in front of 408 Cedar. After dark, whenever a car makes a right-hand turn to head east there on Cedar, I'm assuming that all of the properties in question are lit up by those headlights. So I don't know that the property is protected currently from light that would be considered a nuisance. I think, Crystal brought up an excellent point, that looking at the map, you can tell it's going to be the rare occurrence when any light does actually make it through these buildings to hit those duplexes. They're not currently protected in any way from any sort of road light. I'm just wondering if...
They probab, I mean, they, the tenants probably shine their lights on each other when they're pulling in and out.
I, I would assume.
Probably more than the storage units would.
Yeah.
The only point being that typically bedrooms are in the back of buildings, not in the front.
And I believe the one duplex, the parking is behind it, too, so.
Well, and my, my point in all this is that the uses that are outright permitted are much more, I think would be much more objectionable for you and your duplexes. This could include automotive sales and repair, vehicle fuel sales. It could include, there could be a restaurant back there, there could be, because those are all outright permitted. They would not be allowed, this one has a conditional use, but this is zoned commercial general. I mean, there could be, there could be a McDonald's back there. There could be things that have much more impact on your properties than this would. This actually seems to me to offer some protections for the people in your units. If we can get, even, I would say, even if the fence had slating in it, right? If the chain-link had some kind of slating that protected light, she'd probably be taken care of as well. I'm not, the other points about runaway vehicles and things like that, I mean, that could happen on the street, right? I'm not, that has, that's not tied to this property. Just the idea that this, the, the uses that are allowed outright, I think would be much more, have a much greater impact than this use that is being asked for with conditional use. And, and they wouldn't have to come here and ask anybody's permission, they could just build them.
Do I have an opportunity to chime in still?
Let, let us discuss a little bit more, and then we'll, we'll give you a few more minutes.
So, I think, I think for me, I think it might be, given that we have a lot of concerns, or kind of like also modifications, I think also, it might actually be good to kind of think about mitigation, and then actually having the city staff actually kind of inter, kind of mediate. It seems, based on their two lawyers, it seems like the two have really resolved a lot. I think there is very little difference in terms of how things could be resolved, but I think it's, in terms of if I read the mediation correctly, it's just one meeting, at least a minimum of one meeting, and they can come and kind of, I guess between, like, in terms of how these, how both parties are comfortable, I think, in addition to our discussions, I think it's really important to have both parties be comfortable in terms of fighting, finding a compromise.
I feel like it would be a waste of time. I think it would be a waste of time and resources. I think they've gone through the, a letter, they've addressed every one of those items, and how they would address those. I, I see that, I think it would be just a waste of time. They've read it, and they've said, this is how we'll address it.
Can I actually ask, maybe, I guess, open it up and kind of maybe get the legal counsel? Like, how much would mediation cost?
Cheaper than, or not as much as a tree. I mean, we're one, we're, we're one tree, seriously, I mean, we're one tree away from everybody being happy. Let's plant the tree. Who cares?
That's, yeah, that's what I would, I would totally be up for a tree right there, yeah. Fencing tree.
I, I mean, you're totally right. Other uses would be way more invasive, 100% point, but it's a conditional use permit, and when we're evaluating those, we're instructed to look at its impact on surrounding developments. Ms. Sohos has a surrounding development, she's saying, as a taxpayer, property taxes on three buildings, that she feels impacted. Let's spend $2,500 on a tree. Let's just plant it. I mean, I'm not gonna deny, I don't think any of us are gonna deny this regardless, right? But if everybody's happy over a tree, just seems silly.
I guess the concern I have is, like, I know this is discussion of mine in itself, but, I mean, is this, when she's happy, or is this confirmed that she's happy? I mean, in terms of the solution?
Am I allowed to address the?
I don't, well, I'm gonna say, I don't feel like that's what, we are not the mediators. We're not the mediator, so we're not gonna go there. So I think we would make a decision that we think should make everybody happy, and that's the decision we make.
I, I feel very heard. Thank you, Crystal.
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit application from Skyler Hartman of Capital Line Holdings, P L L C, for the use of self-service storage in the Commercial General zoning district, finding the application does meet the standard for approvals under Chapter 17.02.130 of Pocatello Municipal Code, with conditions listed in the staff report, and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
Does silence mean you guys want the tree?
There's no second.
There's no, so we, we need to have a...
Right, and nobody seconded it.
Second. So you could, would he second, or make a new motion to include the tree in that?
It'd have to be a new motion.
A new motion.
Okay, this is my first motion, guys. Make sure I get this right. I'd like to make a motion. I motion to approve the conditional use permit from Skyler Hartman of Capital Line Holdings, P L L C, for the use of self-service storage in the Commercial General zoning district, finding that the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.130 of Pocatello Municipal Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report, and adding a tree between the buildings of, or rather, extending the landscape buffer. Does anybody have that in?
800 and 700.
800 and 700. And authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Worrell, a second by Hula Aslan. Will you call vote?
Yes.
No. I can second and vote no.
Okay.
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Phillips?
No.
Yes.
Okay. Onto agenda item number five. Give me a second, please, to find this in my huge pile. At this time, time has been set aside for a public hearing for conditional use permit 22237, for the commission to hear. Have we gone to Jason Road yet? Yes, this is what we're doing, sorry, guys. For Capital Line Holdings, P L L C, for conditional use permit to allow for new storage units within Commercial General zoning district at 3934 Jason Avenue. I declare the public hearing open, and at this time, I would like to invite the applicant to come forward.
Thanks for your time this evening. This is gonna be another great project. I think it's gonna benefit the city in numerous ways beyond self-storage. That area does lack self-storage as well. That property's been illegally used before for storage containers. It had a rundown mobile home on it, so this is gonna be another great improvement for that area. Hopefully, the new, new development will spur other new developments in that area as well. Hopefully, we can get some more, more growth down there. The major issue in that corner is it's a low corner of the flood zone, and so there's, there's been some historical flooding, and with our, our civil package, we've, we've talked in the development review process, working with the city to create a water detention pond off-site, and mitigate a lot of the stormwater from the surrounding residents in that area as well. So I think it's gonna be a win-win project, another Class A facility. And also, we're, we're trying to change the, the way self-storage is viewed. A lot of, a lot of us get, you know, kind of the mobile home-type feel. People look at it in a similar light, but these are Class A facilities. They're more of a retail feel, and high-security, great access control. And it's, it's gonna be a great project, so that's all I have.
I have a question for the applicant.
Yep.
One of the things in your application mentions a tower at the entrance?
No, we've, we've, we've changed that, we've cut it down. It's gonna look very similar to the last project, probably about a 14-foot. So that was originally...
Yeah, I was looking at this, and I'm like, that's not a tower.
That's not a tower.
By my definition.
Yeah. So we, we were gonna use a onsite apartment manager there, but we've, we've transitioned to the hub-and-spoke model, so we'll have Ann running our management from Wildwood most of the time, and then we'll have a...
I don't know what a hub-and-spoke model is.
Okay, so we, we'll have one manager running numerous sites from one office.
Okay.
She's the hub, other sites are the spokes.
Oh, no, the spokes, got it. Okay, thank you. That was the, really, the only question I have.
Perfect.
Thank you. Commission, any other questions? At this time, I would like to invite staff to come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission members, Matthew Lewis, senior planner here with the city. First of all, I did put a PowerPoint together, but I'm not as proficient as my colleagues, and so, like, I didn't, I don't have, like, the plan. So, you know, if you can refer to that when we get to that point, that would be awesome. So what's before you? The subject property includes four tax parcels totaling 2.07 acres, more or less. The parcels are located between Jason Avenue and McDougal Street, specifically addressed as 3934 Jason Avenue. The zoning for the subject property is Commercial General, and as you already know, self-storage units are only permitted in a CG district through the conditional use permit. The property is flat, with a history of code enforcement cases that go back as far as 2016, for land use is not being legally established there. Based on Code Section 1702.130 criteria for review, staff finds that the proposal will be harmonious in scale, mass, and coverage as a zoning. So one point I'd like to make on this, is you can see, the zoning actually extends beyond that property to the end of McDougal Street. So there are some residential, residential uses that are in the Commercial General zoning district. Again, it's the same, same kind of thing, where a transitional buffer is not required, because you don't have two different districts buddying one another. Existing uses within a 300-foot buffer surrounding a proposed development site include a boat storage repair business, vacant building with parking, which was at once, one time... storage repair business, vacant building with parking, which was at once, one time, common sense convenience store many years ago, and a mix of residential apartments and single-family residential north and west of the site. The minimum parking that's required is six parking spaces. In the proposal, they are proposing 14 spaces. Adequate public facilities, services are existing and available to, to the property. All property owners within the 300-foot radius of the existing boundaries have been providing notice of the public hearing. Notice was provided in the Idaho State Journal. At the time of the completion of the, of my report, there is no written correspondence that was provided. I did receive one phone call just asking about the use. So that, with that, staff recommends that the proposal is compliant with applicable standards of City Code 1702.130 with the conditions as you see here. The one condition I would like to point out is number two, or actually, one. The fire department did submit a memo that's in your packet that, that they have some conditions that need to be addressed. If you go to the, the map, they need access for the storage units that I believe is the number 200. And as for their hoes and so forth, and that is within their memorandum. So staff simply recommends that that be included as part of that. They may have to take out some units there. But that concludes my presentation on this one. I'd just like to note also that this conditional use permit was at one time, back in 2020, for storage units, it was approved by the commission for 256 units. This one's a little bit higher, 282, but it has some smaller units that were in the other one. It also has a different configuration in terms of just internal. So with that, any questions you have, I'll be happy to answer them.
There was one comment from a nearby neighbor, doesn't give exact address, about access, and that she would like to see it accessed off Samuel or McDougal instead. And I don't know, I guess, I guess we'd like to know the staff's thoughts on that.
Uh, I think, I think I would leave that to answer from our, from Merrill with Public Works. I think we're fine with the Jason configuration. The Jason did, at one time, it was closer than what it is now. They did move that back, so it does allow for a little bit more stacking. Also, there's, on McDougal, there's quite a bit, and there's like a mix of apartments and so forth in there. Depends on how far you go on to McDougal. And so, but I, I can have Merrill answer that beyond that.
Any other questions?
So I remember, is this the property that also, I think, it might be confusing properties, but just for clarification, there was water, stormwater issues in this area?
Yeah, and that's what, that's what the applicant referred to as, there's a little spot right there at that intersection. And I know that Public Works is going to be working to alleviate some of that issue there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Merrill Quell, the Public Works Engineer for the city of Pocatello. To answer the first question is, is that we wouldn't put a, an access off of McDougal. It's a dead-end street, kinda hard to navigate when you're bringing in vehicles and so forth there. So we don't wanna bring traffic into a dead end and then miss the gate and try to figure out how they're gonna be turning around at the end. Second, there is gonna be a secondary gate that would retain there off of Samuel at McDougal there, crossing city property. We've looked at that, and when we looked at that, that that gate would remain. It will not be the primary access, in my understanding, but it'll be there for any type of a secondary access, as fire always is looking for that or different things that might, may or may not happen there. The main access will be off of Jason Street. As pointed out, we will evaluate the plans as it comes in more in detail. But as it looks right now and is discussion, that access has been pushed to the north, probably about 40 feet or so. I couldn't tell from the drawings, it's small and that, and off of this. But as the construction drawings come in, we'll evaluate that per our access standards and get it away from the access to Jason to South Fifth. And the speed's there at 45 miles an hour. So that will give there, it'll, it'll pull it away from the curve on Jason and everything also. But it has been and will be shifted to the north to meet those requirements. As far as the stormwater, again, as you've seen this, I don't know if any of you've seen this a few years ago when it first went through. And looking at that, there is the option where this is a low spot and they could use some fill. The options are still there that we can lower the Constitution Park on the one end and to bring pipes over to alleviate some of the stormwater for that area and everything. And they, and the developer can also use that fill on their property in conjunction with coordinating and helping with that facility.
But this will, just to clarify, this will have to meet our, our city's stormwater. I mean, it's gonna have to retain stormwater or work with you guys.
Every development, whether it's a partial compliance or full compliance, and that meets the stormwater requirements.
And before this is developed out, regardless of what the plan is he submitted, it's gonna have to undergo the traffic study as far as how far it's set back.
There won't be a traffic study.
Not a traffic study, but you're gonna look at...
This does not warrant a traffic study, no.
Okay. But you're, you were talking about looking at how far this is set back from Fifth?
That's, that's our access standards and so forth. So if they moved it to 40 feet or there, we'll reevaluate that...
Okay.
More in detail, and it should meet those standards, yes.
Okay. So I had the same concerns pulling out. That's not a big gap there, but I, I'm not obviously an engineer, so...
Well, that's one of our best intersections in town.
It is.
Any other questions for Merrill?
Yeah, this is kinda out there, Merrill, but I'm curious. So we've got the entrance there, right next to the intersection of Jason and Fifth, but we could push it to, I suppose that would be the northwest side and shift the buildings to where the entrance, so basically go up to that other property line. Could we do that to reduce the amount of cars that are slowing down immediately, turning off of Fifth Avenue?
Again, we're gonna have, that, that new approach to the center of that approach is gonna be well over 100 feet.
Okay.
So, and, and as, I guess sarcasm isn't very good, but that intersection used to come out straight and out to Samuel years ago, and it was realigned so that it was perpendicular so we could, and it is very tight there. So I don't see any cars at any type of a speed coming around off of Fifth onto Jason to do that. And there's adequate distance, like I said, meeting our standards to, to have there. They also are required and have shown that a van or trailer, truck combination moving there will be off the road before they hit the gates. They will not be parked in the road...
Okay.
...waiting for the gates to open.
Great, that was my question, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hartman, will you just like, explain to me, I'm just looking at the, the colors on your overall, the flow process you see of where the storage is and how people are gonna get to them and that?
So those, most of those buildings are interior storage, so they're climate-controlled. So you're gonna have a dolly or a big cart, load your stuff in and wheel it down the hall.
Will it be sprinkled?
Um, I don't believe so. My architect deals with that, but he's got firewalls every, not exceeding 12,000 feet or whatever his standards are. It's not my forte, so I'll lean on the professionals for, for that.
Okay, okay.
And same with the fire hose issue. I spoke with my architect about that. He, he feels confident that they will be able to access it, but of course, we'll, we'll verify, and if changes need to be made, we'll, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I would invite anybody providing testimony supporting the application to come forward. Anyone uncommitted to the application? Anyone opposed to the application?
Hi, Joey Yeaman again, Wildlife Way. Sounds like there's a lot of changings going down on my end of town. I'm gonna have to respectfully disagree with Mr. Merrill back there. That corner at Jason and South Fifth, henuis. Try it at Century when Century gets out of school, I dare you, if you wanna take the chance. It's a bad idea. Been in that neighborhood now for 23 years, 22 years. I use both those. My wife and I, when we come home from work, we specifically go right on South Fifth, up to Barton Road, around Wildlife Way and down to our house. It adds an extra half-mile every day. Had that up over a year's time. The reason why we don't go left when we get off the freeway down there, bad traffic down there at that corner. The state came in, oh, last year or two years ago, they put up those plastic yellow things, whatever you wanna call them. There was a purpose for that, is to help to separate the traffic down there on that corner. Ever since that South Town Connector came in, boy, the traffic on that end of town, ridiculous at certain times of the day. Ridiculous. But trying to turn, you, I mean, when the school's out or going, you're not turning left on Jason. Go down South Fourth, South Fifth, guarantee it. You better turn right and go down and flip a U-turn. As far as that goes, you know, I'm hearing a lot of the fill-in stuff, and so far, I'm here, and I listened to the lady over in Midtown, and it's all storage units. Well, why don't we have some planning for storage units in the richer neighborhoods and instead of in the working man neighborhoods? I'm just keeping it real, because over there on McKinley, that's a working man's neighborhood. And what are you gonna get? Storage units. What are you gonna get on the south end of town with working man neighborhood? More storage units. Let's diversify a little bit. Throw some storage units up on Satterfield. Tell me how that would work out. I mean, just, I'm just keeping it real, being respectful. So, you know, this whole storage unit things, I get business. I am a businessman myself. But really, do we have to put storage units everywhere? But as far as the traffic goes, I disagree. That's, that's bad news down there. It's bad news. And we go right coming off the freeway instead of going left. That's a, that's a bad location. Thank you.
Thank you. I will...
Yeaman, Y E A M A N.
I'll assure you that Mr. Quell was being very sarcastic about the intersection. He, it's, I would say he was saying it's one of the worst in town. And then just reference you back to, you can have a storage unit or you can have a Walmart going in there. I mean, it's...
It's sound commercial.
You know, it's, that's, it's permitted outright.
But it's conditional use commercial, correct?
Walmart would be permitted outright. They wouldn't have to do this.
McDonald's would too.
Yeah, but storage units do have to, so just to, and, and that, the, it's recognized that that's tight. They're gonna make sure that that entrance is far enough away to not impede traffic anymore on South Fifth there. Anybody else opposed? No, I would give the applicant opportunity to rebuttal.
Sure. I think we pretty much agree, or we've already discussed traffic at the Wildwood facility, and it's pretty light traffic use. So there's so much, so many other uses that are permitted by right that are gonna be much more intensive than this. So I think this is a, a great fit for this location. Thank you.
With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Commission, conversation?
I mean, I understand the park, or the traffic concerns, but that's, you know, basically just saying that they'd rather it not be developed with anything. I, I mean, it's land, it's there, it's meant to be used. This is a lighter use than a lot of the other permitted uses. Probably good for the area.
Yeah, I'm kind of of the same. I mean, I look, he's gonna have landscaping in. This isn't gonna be, it's gonna have a fence around it. It won't be a privacy fence, but it'll have a fence around it. And it's gonna have landscaping around it, and it will be gated access. I don't see, one of the, one of the objections was that there should be a privacy fence, so trash produced by the clients doesn't need to be viewed by all who, who enter our neighborhood. I've seen that property. This would be a drastic improvement from, from what has been there and what is there. It'll be, it'll be landscaped nicely, and it'll look nice, and most of it, it sounds nice, most of it, there're gonna be two main big buildings with some perimeter storage units around the side is what it looks like. So I actually think it'll be visually appealing and an improvement on that area, especially given that it's zone Commercial General and could have all kinds of other things there. You could have all of the high school students stopping there to pick up their McDonald's stuff, so there's that. And I don't think, as far as what business goes in there, I'm assuming the applicant is, has a business plan that shows that there's a need for storage units. Otherwise, you wouldn't be building these, right? There's, there's a business, there's a, there's a business plan that says, I, we need this, our city needs it. He wouldn't be building it if he didn't think there was a need for it, so I don't think that needs to be part of our consideration.
So I, I agree. I think it's the traffic situation, I, I think it's, for me, it's kind of trying to separate out the traffic situation is there, whether or not the structure is there or not. So I think to separate that is, I think, very important. And like Dakota said, you know, this is probably a light use, probably in terms of adding traffic. It's probably going to actually, you know, compared to other kind of high-traffic uses. So I guess trying to separate that and clarifying that is also really important to understand this property. I think also in terms of commercial risk, it's always the investor who's always taking the commercial risk. So if demand projections are wrong, it's, it's the entrepreneur who takes the risk. So I think that's also really kind of another component that I put into my consideration.
Yes. Will the chair undertake a motion? I move to approve the application from Addict Self-Storage LLC for a conditional use permit to allow for new storage units to be developed within the Commercial General CG zoning district, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.130 of Pocatello Municipal Code, with the conditions outlined in the staff report, and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
Second.
I have a motion by Hula, a second by Rorl. Aslan, will you call vote, please?
Hula?
Yes.
Rorl?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Well, guys, we have maybe 30 seconds to eight. We are going to take a quick break, maybe just five minutes.
Great.
So we will meet back here at eight, at five after eight to continue the rest of the agenda items. Yes, please. With the planning and zoning meeting, we are now on agenda item...
He replaced him when he retired.
Hey!
Who's that?
Angry.
No, it didn't, it jumped. It didn't need to be that angry. Oh, but I'm getting cheered on, so maybe I... Okay, thank you for your patience for that little break, guys. We will be moving on to agenda item number six. I would like to remind you guys that when you come to the podium, please make sure you state your name. Questions and comments have to be pertinent to the application and addressed to the applicant. and comments have to be pertinent to the application and addressed to the commission. There is, this is a public hearing, so there should be no questions, comments, or applause to the audience. Um, I would like to encourage you guys to, if somebody's already stated it, please know that we've heard it. Um, when things get redundant, then we, you know, start to, to lose track of all, of the things that haven't, that haven't been repeated that were new. So, if somebody else has, has said it, if we've already read it in what's been submitted, um, please note that we've taken that into consideration. Um, and, um, I think that is all. So, agenda item number six, public hearing, Zone Map Amendment 22-276. John Burtonshaw and JG Ventures LLC and represented by Michael Jaglowski has submitted a zoning map amendment to rezone the subject property located at the 700 block of Hospital Way from low, residential low-density to residential commercial professional. I will now declare the public hearing open, and I would invite the applicant to come forward.
Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioner, I know that you're volunteer. I thank you too, on that. Um, my name's Mike Jaglowski. I represent, uh, JG Ventures. Um, I have a presentation that we, we put together. Uh, basically, it's gonna tell the story of, of how we came to answer the questions on the application. This is a rezone, uh, application, and by such, uh, we're requesting, uh, the, the zone to change from one to the other. Uh, there's been a lot of public comment. I like public comment. People might not think that, but it's like, it engages the public, and that's really what a public hearing is all about. Uh, hopefully I'll, as I'm addressing you, hopefully I, I'm addressing some of the comments that came out of this. Um, in fact, one of the comments that I'm going to shortly address is, there's a lot of questions of like, why didn't you show us something? And I think the answer is, we don't know exactly what the zone's gonna be. Makes sense, and I hear, and that's something that we're gonna bring forward today. Um, but really kind of warm up a little bit, I'm gonna start with making sure I know how to use this. There we go. I'm gonna start with some of the physical characteristics. Now, the application does a pretty good job of describing what it's all about, but I want to draw your attention to the, the existing zone. Uh, this is, this is split zone, where about one-third, or the northern one-third is RCP, residential, commercial, professional, and the south, two-thirds, is, uh, residential low-density. Okay? And you start thinking to yourself, how in the world did this happen? How did this get put into two different places? And that's a question that I can't answer, and I don't know if anyone here can, can really answer that correctly. However, we have a guiding document. It's a comprehensive plan.
Will you speak up, please?
Yes, I can. We have a guiding document. It's called the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan takes a lot of things into consideration, um, a lot of public input, and it gives us a guiding direction of, of where we should be. Uh, the, in the comprehensive plan, there's a future land use map, or, or a, a land use map that targets and directs us towards what the land could be or what it should be on there. I want to draw your attention to the future land use as mixed use. Um, I recognize also that it's been there for nearly a decade, or, you know, it, it's, it's been there for a while. In fact, researching that back, some of the, the land uses that was, uh, that was projected even as far back as, uh, 2003 was, was an industrial type of use on that. Um, so, I think we've moved in the right direction looking at RCP and then also, uh, low-density residential. Some of the other questions is like, is this place really stable? Um, and it is. We had a local geotechnical engineering firm come out there and do a complete analysis of the, of the property, and we found that everything is in sorts. It can hold, uh, it, it has a correct bearing capacity and lateral strengths to be able to hold buildings. Um, maybe not as tall as, you know, 10 stories or something like that, but it's, but, um, that's something that isn't allowed in RCP. Um, public utilities are available? Okay. Um, public utilities are available?
There's not a volume. The microphone is for recording purposes, sorry.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna yell. There's some seats here. Maybe I should do it this way.
It has to be recorded.
It's, but the recording. I hear all kinds of... Perfect, perfect.
Do you want to move up, sir?
I won't bite. Not very hard.
Feel free to bring your chair with you.
Perfect. Now, you guys don't bite, do you?
Only a little bit.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Just a little bit? Okay.
Keep your comments to the commission.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we do know that public utilities are adjacent to the site, and we do know that this is in municipal limits, which is, which is, uh, important. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the guiding direct, uh, guiding documents. I talked a little bit about the comprehensive plan, and the purpose of that is to give us an idea of where, uh, zoning and usage should be in the future. Um, some of the items that I looked at specifically is in Chapter Four, Economic Development, Chapter Five, land use, of course, to try to understand things like what's mixed use and how does mixed use compare to, uh, what the city code recognizes as what mixed use and future land use, what it looks like in, in today's type of land use. Uh, Pocatello City Code is another guiding document. Chapter 17 talks all about, you know, land use and planning, uh, on there. Uh, the zoning map, the current zoning map is what we're, we're looking right now to change, and really, uh, we're wanting to change everything to this, to the same zone, which is, which is RCP. Um, Pocatello, um, City Code 1701-130 or .130, it, it gives us that opportunity to understand what mixed use is compared to what the current zoning is, and it directly relates to RCP. Um, and then also, a lot of my comments, a lot of things I've put in the applications that, um, or within the application that the, uh, the public commented on is that, um, most of the things that were demonstrated in there really come as quotes from the, either the comprehensive plan or, uh, the municipal code on there. So, with these two things, what we did is we started looking at goals and targets, development golden, goals and targets. And one of the things we want to do is we want to listen to staff. We want to look at the, the guiding documents. We want to be able to, uh, understand how the form and the features are gonna work within that site and develop something that is transitional between, uh, residential and then also commercial professional on that. Um, one thing that we really like about this site is there's a lot of topography, and what that does is it gives a lot of vertical opportunities. And that, when I say that, is that I gratefully, uh, the land over on the east side is higher than everything over there by the, uh, by the street. And by doing that, we can, we can place the two, three-story buildings closer to the road and still be able to keep viewscapes and, uh, have opportunities for the people that are, that are living there now on that. And the other goal that we want to be is a good neighbor. We want to try to understand the needs of everybody and try to, try to blend that with the, the best use that we can have for that property. And maybe even, I should say, you know, be s, be more so of a good steward, you know, towards that. Look at it from a, more of a citywide, uh, position of being able to have something that's walkable, bikeable, and also that's gonna be able to function in that area. Okay, so, um, this is what we're looking at. Um, you can, you can see, this is, this is a, um, pretty basic sketch, but what it demonstrates is that there's a, there's a commercial area, an office area, professional area, and that's generally represented in blue, blue buildings, and then there's the brown buildings there, uh, which represents opportunities for, for residential uses. Now, if someone was to say, is that a residential, high-density multiplex, or are they a dozen different fourplexes, we're not really at that point yet. Um, we really want to see how this, this meeting comes out and some of the comments that we might get. We did receive a stack of public participation and, um, I was able to whittle through that as, as much as we could with respect to that. But, uh, some of our conceptual goals is to, is to have buffers, to be respectful to those that are, that are on the east side, prevent, um, or I shouldn't say prevent, but provide opportunities to have some space in between their, right, uh, in between those, those two boundaries. Um, right now, the, the city of Pocatello recognizes that there should be a 10-foot buffer, and we're asking the question now is, should there be a larger buffer? Um, some of the questions that we're already citing and programming for that site is, do we have, you know, away from the street parking or closer to the street parking, recognizing the, uh, the residents and the way things might flow and, and, uh, where cars might want to be at different times? We would want to have, try, try to have parking as much as we can in the middle, um, just so we don't have the alarms going off and the early doors shutting and the cars warming up in the, in the cold winter months and things like that, and disturbing some of the peace and, and, uh, that, uh, other people might have had during that time. Um, but really, I, we, we can see, you know, from having Portnife Medical Center across the street, we can see that, you know, we might have residents that would be living there or interns or people in the medical field that would be able to visit, you know, a professional office or a medical office or a restaurant, or, you know, a, a financial institution or something like that within the site, and then walk to work and then back and forth and really try to, you know, present some type of, you know, uh, opportunity within, within that standpoint. But we really do have, uh, a deeper vision than just, hey, let's throw up a bunch of buildings and, and, uh, cause things to be disruptive in the area. I want to echo some of the things I, I learned a while ago is that, um, it makes sense to, you know, to be shepherds or to be stewards or to be, uh, good citizens when it comes to development, because really, when we're putting up buildings or when we're, you know, programming things to happen, we want to make sure that they're, they're, they're gonna be compatible with all different uses. And that's what RCP does. It gives us an opportunity to look at all different avenues and blend things, uh, in a transitional way like the comprehensive plan so states. I can hold my breath for 14 seconds if you want.
As long as you don't sing.
No, ma'am.
So, it appears that you've, even though it wasn't out before, you've spent some time thinking about, um, what you're going to put in here. Um, and it, what you want is a mix of residential and, and office buildings? Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Absolutely. In fact, we started looking and programming this in about October of last year and trying to see the different things that would fit and how they could fit. Uh, in so much of, started looking at different uses in different places, adjacent to hospitals, adjacent to, uh, the places that are up there on Center Street. I need to speak up, sorry. Maybe a little dry mouth here, I'm not sure. But yes, we've been, we've been looking at this for quite a while, and some of the statements that we've heard is, you don't even have a plan. That's, that's not true. We don't have a zone. You know, and to be able to plan or to put together, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in planning, and then all of a sudden something doesn't work the way that we thought it would, doesn't make sense. It's difficult to do that. But we are fully invested in this. We're, uh, we're happy to, you know, to do everything, to do what we can to, to make things look the way they should.
Are you amenable as, I'm just gonna assume that some zoning change, if, if that goes forward, are you amenable to working or meeting with neighbors, not working with them, but meeting with them and discussing and hearing feedback from them in a mediation kind of process, to at least to hear their concerns and try and address those down the road when you get plans in place? Is that something that this developer would be open to?
So, I don't know about mediation. Mediation has a different, you know, a different connotation.
Sure.
Uh, discuss, share, uh, try to, try, try to learn.
To meet with, talk to each other?
Yeah, you know, and I, I think, you know, discuss, share, learn, try to understand, you know, are, are better words to use than mediation.
Okay. So, yes, to your, you, you defined your terms. Is that a yes?
What's that?
Is that a yes to those terms as you define them? Yes?
I think the city code requires us. I mean, in a, in a preliminary plat point of view, I mean, that's a public hearing. We come to you, we talk to you guys about it, and then it goes to city council. You know, and that's actually one of the questions that, that came up in these, in the, in the letters, is that we don't have another chance to hear this other than this here. And that's not true. There's a whole nother, there's a whole nother public hearing after this. And that's some, two?
Two more.
Two more words. Well, yeah, we have one, yeah, we have one at city council after this, and then we go back to, then we go, go back to preliminary plat. Madam Chair informs me there's two more. Holy cow.
Commission, questions for the applicant?
I'm still thinking it through, sorry.
Okay, we can come back.
Hey, you can, you can tag me in later.
Okay.
All right.
Um, this time, we would like to hear from staff.
Ooh, we get two.
Well, I'm just the IT guy.
We like our IT guys.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission members. Matthew Lewis again, senior planner. Uh, so, what you have before you, and some of this has been already, um, gone over with my Mr. Jaglowski, uh, the request is to rezone 8.75 acres of a 13.12 acre parcel of land. So, four, 4.37 acres of that on the northern portion is already zoned residential, commercial, professional. Um, in this case, the 8.75 would parcel from, would be from the current residential low-density to, uh, commercial, or residential, commercial, professional. As you know, the site is located adjacent to Hospital Way, east of the Portnife Medical Center and west of Sagewood Hills, uh, neighborhood. The parcel, um, as noted, uh, can be adequately served, uh, by water and sewer and private utilities, and pri, primary access to the parcel regardless what is gonna be developed there, um, would be from Hospital Way. Um, so, we had a lot of correspondence, as you know, written correspondence, and the question I, that I went through most, mostly was, why wasn't a development plan required in this case? And the answer is, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property to allow uses permitted in the residential, for, commercial, professional designation, and the application does not require submission of a development plan like a conditional use permit. Um, under Code Section 1703, 300, um, just, just so you, we have an understanding of the uses here, uh, the RCP zoning district is intended to accommodate a mix of residential, professional office, and neighborhood commercial uses, including business, uh, professional services, convenience retail, uh, personal services, and restaurants in close proximity to residential areas and major transportation facilities. Residential uses are, uh, permitted consistent with the residential high-density designation, thus multifamily apartments would be permitted if it were zoned RCP. Um, the other concern that, um, I've had raised is, well, they're gonna build a hotel there. Hotels are not permitted in RCP zoning district. Uh, a couple, uh, clarifications, um, again, going through some of the comments that I received, and I'm just transparent, uh, and just want to make some, uh, clarification regarding the zoning. Uh, the staff report, uh, stated that the adjacent land abutting, um, the parcel, which is part of the request, is zoned, oh, is zoned, uh, RCP. So, there's a, a 5.03 acre parcel that abuts at to the south that's actually zoned residential low-density. What is, what is the case is you can see beyond, beyond that 5.03 acre, uh, parcel, all of the land that is around it, including the hospital and so forth, is zoned residential, commercial, professional. Um, the property adjacent, I already mentioned that, and then... The property adjacent, I already mentioned that, and then the RH designation that was mentioned in the report actually refers to apartments that are on Bertie Thompson Drive. Any future development on the parcel will be subject to slope development standards, which includes a geotechnical evaluation in the report. It is likely that if and when developed, it will be subdivided and Code Section 16.20.040D requires that a public hearing be held before the commission for preliminary plat. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the parcel would also be informed by mail. Notice placed on the property, notice in the paper. The comprehensive plan map, so the comprehensive plan land use map designation for the subject property is zoned mixed use. The requested zoning map amendment is consistent with the current designation and will not require a change to the comprehensive plan with the proposed change from residential low density to the RCP. So you can see that whole area is zoned at mixed use. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the existing property's boundaries have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the application. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal on March 29, 2022, and assigned post on the subject property. All notices herein described have been provided at least 15 days prior to the public hearing. As you know, numerous written comments were received by the public and the commission was emailed such on Tuesday, April 12, 2022. And staff also received numerous calls and three office visits with regards to the request. I need some water. Sorry. So these are some optional motions. Of course, the commission needs to make a motion of some sort, and these are always helpful to guide you in that. And that concludes my presentation on this.
Can you enlighten me as to the nature, what kinds of things were, you got in the phone calls that you received? Were they generally opposed and asking questions? What, I mean, we've got the written testimony, but what about the phone calls?
Yeah, mostly we were opposed. They didn't understand why. They didn't have a plan that they could look at. And I tried to address that in that the application, in this case doesn't require that.
This means the meeting doesn't usually go this long.
So, I mean, when we rezonate, we don't require a plan. I mean, there's no, that's not a requirement for rezoning. That's not, they're two different animals. But we will, there will be public hearings when there is a plan submitted. That's the subdivision, the plating of the subdivisions.
Only if it's platted.
Only if they platted.
Yeah, and it'd be a preliminary plat. So that doesn't, you know, if it's rezoned and those uses are allowed, then they're permitted. And so, but the point is, is that if it were residential or it were office and they subdivided it out and so forth, then there would be a preliminary plat.
Okay. So what I'm, I guess, the gist of my question is, will people have an opportunity to weigh in on a plan?
On the plat.
On the plat, for what they're planning. They're going to plaid it out.
Yeah.
So that they can sell out the different parcels when it comes to that. And that's an opportunity for the public to actually understand what's being planned and be able to come and talk and say comments and things about it.
Well.
As a public hearing.
If they subdivide.
Which you're likely to.
Yes. Okay.
But there's quite a few uses that wouldn't require that.
Yeah. It doesn't mean that, okay, they're going to build a professional office building if it's rezoned. It's hypothetical. If they rezone it and they come in and they have lot 1, 2, 3, 4 and so forth, and they meet the minimum lot size and so forth for parking, but if the land use is permitted, it's permitted.
Okay. In the RCP designation, are there limits on heights, the height of buildings?
Yeah, 45 feet.
45 feet. So they can't be taller than 45 feet. Okay. And in the comprehensive plan, what is meant by mixed use? What is the idea behind that?
Oh, mixed use is exactly, is that designation, mix of residential, professional office, some light, some commercial.
And it's meant to be kind of a buffer between outright commercial and residential areas? Okay. Has there been past interest in developing this property? I'm just curious why, this is pretty good views of the town, why hasn't this been developed as low-density housing?
Yeah. So I worked here for about 33 years now.
That you might know, yeah.
And there's only one time I can recall that there was some interest in it, and I think it went through a process, but it didn't go to, it wasn't, didn't go forward.
Okay.
Beverly Bice line for many years owned the property, and I think that she donated to the university, and they since have sold it.
Okay. So it was privately owned and she didn't have any interest as?
No.
All right.
So this property has dual zoning, correct? It's not parceled out, it's one parcel that has two different zonings attached to it?
That's correct.
When that occurs, did anybody have to go survey this and decide exactly where one zoning ended and the next began? Wow.
So, so good, just going back, just going back and looking at, looking at the map, you know, the comprehensive plan map and how, you know, how did, how did that occur over time? And there's, going, starting back in 2003 to 2005 until 2015, the designation of that parcel was industrial slash office, which I think was meant to be for like an office park type, like an Alvin American. It wasn't until the 2015 comp plan that it's gone to mixed use, which is actually better in terms of, you know, the land use, but but there's always been that split there.
Yeah.
And with that 4.37 acre, and I think just over time, that zoning, the zoning's always been just carried through with that.
I'm just trying to figure out at some point when somebody decided this part was going to be residential low density and this part was going to be RCP, why did they cut it off there? Does that make sense?
They had a way bigger picture than one parcel.
Yeah.
I bet you they didn't realize it cut through a parcel.
Oh, you're thinking they were just literally zoomed out.
Big picture, yeah.
I see.
Look at individual parcels for that.
Madam Chair, when everybody's done asking Mr. Matt questions, would it be appropriate for me to ask a question to Legal?
Sure, go ahead.
Sir, I just have one question. Municipal Code Section 17 dash 02 dash 130E, that's the authority to grant. That's where it gives us this list of nine things that we can consider when approving things. I'm confused, does this only apply to conditional use permits or is this when interpreting rezones, conditional use permits, variances, et cetera?
And I apologize, I don't have the exact ordinance in front of me, but Matt Kerbs, Deputy City Attorney for the record.
What was the question?
I guess it applies.
You can have mine if you'd like.
It's on agenda, I think it's mentioned on Agenda Item 3.
3. The very first page.
Conditional use permit.
And what's the ordinance section? I apologize.
It's 17 dot 02, 130.
Oh, so it's just CUPs.
Only CUPs. Okay, does not, okay.
Yeah, there's different.
There are different criteria.
I was getting redyed during.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Sorry.
No, you're good. And then I would just like to confirm, has there been any further written correspondence received since what we've received today? You got everything. Okay. Thank you. I know I've repeated this time and time again. Please state your name when you come to the podium. Please remember to address the commission, not the applicant or the staff or other audience members. You will only have three minutes. Make sure your questions and comments are pertinent to the application. Do not duplicate questions, concerns or comments covered by previous testimony heard today. At this time, I would like to invite anybody supporting the application to come forward. I would like to invite anybody providing testimony uncommitted to the application to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Robert Richway. I live at 1085 Cache Peak Way. I come before you to request a recommendation on your proposal as well as a concern, and then if I have time, I'll make some comments. The recommendation is concerning traffic. If you come from Terry Street over to Center Street, you've got a blind corner, you've got a significant change in altitude where you can't see what's coming over, and we already have a situation at Bertie Thompson Drive like that. Now, I'm very familiar with it since I drive that every day. My request for a recommendation, since I know you can't make this a condition, is that we have, we treat the both parcels in aggregate, the whole 13 acres or 13.12, and make only one curb cut in the appropriate place as city engineering chooses with a frontage road to access the property. I think there are a number of safety issues on the other side, and it's significantly better than the higher side if you've been there. And so I would request that you go forward with that. The advantage of doing the recommendation now is that the developer knows where they stand and can go forward with the planning that way rather than having to redo things at a later date. My concern, any questions on that? That's clear? Okay, my concern is, and this issue has gotten much better, but in my past dealings on your board, we've had a lot of problems with excavation and dust control. I do know it's gotten better, but looking at the topography there, it looks like there's going to be a considerable amount of work there. That is going to not only affect the adjacent neighbors, but it's going to affect the entire neighborhood. And I have been, since I lived there in that neighborhood, I've been the beneficiary of tons of dust. So, and I'm not, I've had my gutters completely filled with dust from excavations that was done above Center Street. So that's a concern. I don't know if that needs to be carried forward or not, but I guess I would like it to be carried forward. And the last thing, or the comment I'd like to make is that should you choose to approve this, I believe that there won't be a whole lot of public input going forward other than at city council. And once you've gotten this, once you approve this change of zoning, then you're going to go into site plans and that sort of thing. But you've pretty much established that we're going to do this here, and that's pretty much everybody's last chances tonight to make, to make comment. So that's, at least that has been my experience having sat on your board before.
Thank you, your time is up, sir. Anybody else uncommitted to the application? Anybody providing testimony opposed to the application?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission, and my name is Candy Brown, and I thank you for your time tonight. And I first want to start out by complimenting the current zoning that has been in place along Hospital Way because it has afforded a very attractive thoroughfare in our city that is complementary to the great city of Pocatello, Idaho. As you drive along there, you see that currently it is lined with medical, professional and business locations and gives a very good view of Pocatello. As you know, and I cited in one of my things, the amount of facilities that require a lot of people traveling to and from their work. And so also I want to bring attention to the fact that as people are trying to recruit state physicians to the hospital and specialty staff or to on semiconductor and recruiting engineers or perhaps professors and staffing to Idaho State University, they most likely will travel over Hospital Way. And currently it is a very complementary street to the city of Pocatello. And I would like to say that by removing the low-density designation, it opens the doors to, of course, as they say, high-density multiplexes and apartments. And to me, that does not complement the current environment of Hospital Way. And after all, it is named Hospital Way. So I think that's an important point. I also want to address the amount of traffic that is on Hospital Way, and since I live up there, I see it all the time. I actually called the Bannick Planning and Transportation Organization and asked the gentleman for a traffic count study, and he said that they have not done one yet for this year because they usually wait till the fair weather months to conduct those studies. And as you know, even April is not fair weather, so there's nothing current. But in the past, the traffic count has been for an average daily weekday 10,000, 10,000 autos per day, which is significant. So adding a high-density residential area which would funnel directly onto Hospital Way because as the gentleman stated, there is no other access to that area but to Hospital Way, you're going to add an increasing amount of traffic, especially most residences have two autos for husband and wife or maybe children also. So I think that that is a major concern. We have all of the emergency vehicles and emergency staff that's called in that would not want to be, have any problems with.
Your time's up, ma'am.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to provide testimony opposing the application?
No, go ahead. Sorry, my name's Brady Moon. I live at 763 Bitterroot Drive, and I would just like to address the zoning that the gentleman was proposing for mixed use. The purpose of mixed use, according to the city comprehensive plan, is to integrate and mesh the two different zoning applications. And in my opinion, Hospital Way is the perfect road to mix that use without having to put buildings in residential to mix, to mix the commercial aspect of it with the residential. He also mentioned that it is zoned, that one parcel is zoned two different ways, and one is eight acres of residential, and he wants the land to be uniform. one is eight acres of residential, and he wants the land to be uniform. It would make more sense to me to make the other four acres residential as well, and make that uniform, if that's really what he's trying to do. Like I said, the purpose of mixed use, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the purpose of mixed use property is to provide a natural integration? Well, we have all that residential there, and that road is the perfect blending, because the way it drops in elevation, the way the hospital drops in elevation, it will be more appealing to the eye when you're driving through the town, to have that as a backdrop to the hospital as well. I have one more point, let's see here, what was it? Oh, also, commercial buildings in the area, the hospital, if they want to build more office spaces, there is lots of office spaces in the area that are currently for sale. There is still more commercial property that they could purchase if they wanted to do those buildings across from Franklin University. There's two nice big plots that they can put there. They don't need to put it right there where, like to Sandy's concern with the increase in traffic, I walked through the neighborhoods last week, and I'll tell you, everybody that I talked to had concerns about them coming in, like has been stated, if we changed the zoning right now, there's nothing to stop him to putting those high-rise buildings in. So there's concern about that allowing the change in zoning now without him being held accountable. So anyways, thanks for your time.
I believe the size of the buildings is limited to 45 feet.
Sure.
And neighborhood commercial freshness would be limited at that?
Right.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, I'm no expert, but I've been around the block a few times.
Say your name, please.
Jim Lathrop, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And thank you for the front row, it's a lot better.
Lathrop?
Yeah, I lost some hearing in Vietnam, so. I've been to Grants Pass for nine years, where they built parks and things all through the different foothills they had, hiking, and I lived in Boise and Eagle for eight years, and the Boise foothills for a short while at that time, we lived up in there. And they had walking trails all through the foothills there, and places the kids could play and do things, and families take their dogs and do a lot of activities. And I don't see that so much up in our end of the foothills where we live. We live right above the hospital on Caribou Way, 2751. I see my neighbor over here, he's on Bitterroot, the borderlines that slope they're talking about, that goes downhill where they want to build. And they're going to have noise and traffic, some of these people have lived there for 30 years, and they've had it quiet down below their houses, and kind of peaceful. And I just think they should take that 13 acres and make a park out of it for kids. I don't see any activities for kids in that whole area. And there's a lot of new housing areas that popped up in the last few years. And, I mean, put in a little fishing pond, maybe a little stream being pumped up the hill and comes back down, and a little dog, place for dogs to run. And when I lived in Grants Pass, they had parks planned out 20, 25, 30 years ahead, they were buying up land for them, before the housing areas even got in there. And they made a point of putting parks in all over town, and then they made a law that they couldn't put in adult facilities, like bars or strip clubs or anything like that, where it was just adults, where they could go in and drink, whatever, and kids weren't allowed. If they had a park within like a half mile of those areas where they wanted to build those, they had it in their bylaws, they couldn't build that close to a park. So it kind of made all the neighborhoods better, in a lot of ways. And I've about used up my time, and an old man. I think for the kids growing up there, I don't see them having anywhere to go. They walk up and down the highways, and that's... Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thanks for your service.
Anybody else opposing the application would like to come forward?
My name is Richard Stallings, and I live at 710 Bitterroot Drive, and I'm here mainly out of curiosity. First of all, I'd like to congratulate and thank you for your public service, this can be a very thankless job. You do make a lot of people happy at times, but also there's a lot of enemies that come out of here and say, "Damn little people." And I understand that and appreciate what you do, so. I guess my concern was exactly what they're going to do there. We've just moved up on Bitterroot, we think it's a beautiful neighborhood, and when I became notified of the proposed changes, all sorts of things came to mind. A pork rendering plant, or a cattle feedlot, or, it's not a lot of land there, but I'm talking about extremes. Also, there's beautiful homes in the neighborhood. I guess my curiosity and my opposition to this point is, what is the long-term plan here? What are we going to get? What kind of neighborhood is this going to be? Because it doesn't take much to change the tire nature of a neighborhood. It doesn't take much to totally make it an alternate result. And so I'm going to watch this very closely, I hope that we'll stay involved and informed, and I can thank you for your efforts and your time, and watch over your stewardship closely, because there's a lot of people at stake here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Richard.
My name is Vivian Goodner, I live on Bitterroot, and one of the other gentlemen said something about Hospital Way being the primary access to whatever they want to build on this piece of ground. What is the other access? Is there another access? I mean, would that come through my neighborhood? I mean, right through my driveway? Where is this other access if Hospital Way is only the primary access? Also, you have my letter, but I just want to question why the staff reviews totally ignored the eastern exposure to this. You know, everything's favorable for the west and north, and I think the south. And the east, which is where the residential neighborhoods are, where I live, is not mentioned at all in the staff review. Is that because that was going to be an unfavorable result, an inappropriate juxtaposition of a nice residential area with who knows what? Anyway, that was all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cliff Olson, I live at 735 Bitterroot, been there for 33 years. I've submitted a bunch of comments, I believe you have them already. Matt alluded to a number of them. I also made comments on the geotechnical report, which by the way, was done in January, but wasn't submitted until two days ago, and as such, it's not in the public record, because it's 35 pages, it's not my document, but I commented on it. I'd like to say that I find it curious, ironic, having listened to the two or three, four cases that came before us, where for conditional use, you are discussing details, splitting hairs, and putting restrictions on the approvals. A number of you made statements to the applicants, hey, lucky if you get this, because, actually to the residents around the land in question, and saying, be lucky that you get a storage unit, for example, or you could get something much worse, that doesn't even require any discussion at all, any further approvals, any further permits. That's ironic. Now you're wanting to make a zoning change, and there's a big difference between residential low-density and RCP, and once you approve RCP, there's all kinds of things that can go in there. This little plan he showed, we haven't seen it before, to my knowledge, the city hasn't seen it before, you people probably never saw it before. His, what did he call it? Pre-concept layout? I suggest that if he wants to put office buildings, he's got five acres to the north already zoned, do it. Then put the residential low-density in the RL to the south, no change required. He can use his land. I should point out, and some of you people are a lot younger than me, again, I've been here for 33 years, I've gone through this kind of a show at least four to six times. They keep changing the zoning up there. I'll tell you the history, you may not know it, but that little spot of RCP land, that was low-density residential, and it got changed.
My job, sir, thank you.
It got changed over the years by all the changes that Isley did.
Thank you, we appreciate your time. Anybody else like to speak in opposition of the application?
Stratton Lagus, I live up on Bitterroot Drive as well, obviously here in opposition to this. I'm looking at this in a little bit different light than some of what's been presented already this evening. Part of this is the visual aspect, there's a 65 to 75-foot elevation difference between Hospital Way and Bitterroot Drive. If we start talking about putting in, frankly, anything more than residential homes, such as, say, a 45-foot tall building, everyone can do the math on the appearance of that. Aside from that, the presentation that we saw with this potential plan that's not really a plan, because we don't know what we're doing or what we're putting in yet, in that sketch, the brown buildings, the residential buildings butt up right next to the homes in Bitterroot Drive. So with this RCP-proposed rezoning, we start looking at really anything being able to go in there, aside from mobile home parks and transitional housing. Anything else is a possibility. So we start talking about potentially apartment complexes, those aren't going to be one or two-level buildings. Office buildings in that area, the only commercial sorts of buildings in that area are right on the corner of Hospital Way and Center Street, going up the hill there. And those buildings, frankly, are not small buildings, and it's not what we want to look at as the residents. All the way to the south, there's nothing else there as far as commercial property on the east side of Hospital Way, until you get to Birdie Thompson. Goldfield Drive there is another residential area. So part of the information that's been presented, a lot of the surrounding areas, including to the south as RCP, frankly, is inaccurate. There's nothing to the south until, again, you get to Goldfield, which is a residential area.
That's not true. There's a dentist office there, I went there today.
Continue, please.
At any rate, the other part of the issue, it's already been alluded to, is the traffic issue. The city already, frankly, doesn't do a very good job enforcing that with law enforcement. That is one of the worst intersections and stoplights in town. We've had a number of issues there, the increase in traffic is certainly going to be a problem. The other practical aspect that I'm looking at, and this comes a lot into, or comes into play a lot, given my daily employment, but some of the other practical issues related to increases in population, increases in crime, or if we slick this off...
Thank you.
My name's John Wilson, I wasn't going to stand up here and say anything, but I want to reinforce what one of these people was saying about, quote, creeping zoning. Most of us up there remember Bill Isley, I have no idea if he's involved with this, but every time you blinked, he was moving the zoning. So now we make it commercial, whatever, RCP thing, and then tomorrow we come in and say, oh, we want to build a 25-story apartment building. That's what I'm worried about. If we can keep everything down to the ground, well, that's one thing, but tomorrow we'll just change what we decide tonight, throw it away, and start over with something else. Thank you.
Amen.
I'd like to talk last. Does anyone else? So I'm going to ask a quick question as I come...
Ma'am, you can only address the commission.
Oh, I'm going to ask a quick question.
Please state your name and address the commission.
Sorry, my name is Kathy Olson, I live at 735 Bitterroot, and I appreciate being able to hear people, and it's difficult to hear in here. So I'm going to ask a question, not to my people, or to the people who are behind me, but I would like to have everyone who signed the petition, the 65 people who signed the petition that was sent to you, to stand up, so that you can see how many people are here behind me. And then I'm going to continue with my comments, thank you. So if you sign that petition, or if you're interested in what's going on, so imagine that you had moved to Pocatello and built your dream home in a community with a beautiful view of sunsets against the backdrop of mountains overlooking a wonderful neighborhood and community. You built 30 years ago in an area that was zoned low-density residential. You worked hard investing in upgrades and making friends with your neighbors, only to have your backyard rezoned and your view blocked by hotel windows. Such is the case in too many neighborhoods now in Pocatello. In 2010, Councilman Roger Bray stated, "We have an issue of development, but we also have an issue of preservation." 12 years later, despite our growth, we have the same issue. Mayor Blad was quoted as saying, "The consideration of private property rights is paramount, and we need to grow, but people want to have quality of life." If this zoning is changed, the rights of the developer will become paramount. To move forward without a plan, although you don't require one, would not be in the best interest of the existing homeowners or the city of Pocatello. And then secondly, since the Planning and Development Services staff has attached the proposed bike path, please recommend, if there's a change, that we maximize existing transportation corridors of bike paths by connecting the already developed paths that go behind the hospital, but not along Hospital Way, and then start again at Farm Bureau. So we've got some really beautiful things that you've got accomplished. We, the residents...
Time's up.
It's your time to decide, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition? At this time, I would like to give the applicant a chance to rebuttal.
Do I get three minutes?
It's a rebuttal.
It's a rebuttal, sir.
I too will try to stalk, talk loudly, so everyone can hear. I apologize to those that didn't hear me the first time. I heard a lot about traffic. And we agree. I mean, traffic is absolute. But until we understand how this property is going to be zoned, we can't really put a finger on it. I can promise you that over 13 acres, someone in the planning staff, someone in the engineering staff would probably suggest a traffic analysis of some type. So I'm sure that we're going to have a chance to understand what that traffic looks like. And I'm just going to kind of go down some of these things. There is another comment about one access. Well, I don't know if I know how to turn this back to, anyway, we could go back to my plan on that. We have two accesses, both on Hospital Way. We're not planning on buying anyone's house and putting another road in. We're open to donations, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's feasible. There is some comment about high-density residential. It's true. That is, that is what's allowed in RCP. There's also low-density residential that's allowed in RCP. There's also open space in parks. You know, there's, there's two aspects to all that. So there is a couple of comments about what's going to go in here. We have had a lot of thought. I'm not going to say that anything about different particular uses other than the comprehensive, comprehensive plan calls this mixed use. And I heard one gentleman talk about it's an integration between adjoining uses. And that's our plan. Our plan is to try to transition between residential and a hospital, you know, commercial, office, professional. Trying to make that, that connection between the two. What that exactly looks like, we're not, we're not, we're not at that point. In fact, I think it was Brady Moon. And if I'm missing the last name, I apologize on that. Let's see. Cliff Olson talks about a geotechnical report. Geotechnical report, he's right, it was done in January. It was submitted in February. There was a question, has, has the city seen this before? We went to site plan review. I believe that that was in February. We asked for comments. And part of our, part of our position was is to use the guiding documents and to use opportunities here within City Hall to help us make decisions, you know, design decisions and development decisions. We took advantage of those opportunities on that. I can't, I mean, there's numerous times where we visited on the phone. We visited with the planning director and staff and, and went to site plan review and talked to engineering and, and tried to get a really good idea of how this works on that type of thing. To say that we haven't planned, I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think we're there yet. It's right, there is a, there is a great relief between Bitter, Bitterroot and Hospital Way. I see it as about 78 feet. Our surveyor could probably give us a better idea of what that is. Our site has been surveyed. We have given a boundary description out there. We had a 10-foot, I think it was a 10 or 20-foot grid that went across and gave us opportunities to understand what the topography is. The reason why that's exciting to us is that should there be a two-story office building, we can, we can place that closest to Hospital Way. We can position that and program it in a way that may not interfere with any kind of viewscapes or, or, you know, other type of landscapes that they might have. You know, when I say they, the residents that are on the east side of the boundary on that, we like those reliefs. It gives us opportunity of massive scale and trying to understand how we can place different things in there, maximize the potential of, of the commercial part of that, and then use the residential as a buffer. That was an impressive list, the 65 people that was stated on there. Makes a lot of sense. I think if I lived in that area, I might be thinking the same thing on that. So I don't, I don't have too much comment other than that's impressive. And I am available for any questions that you might have.
So if, if this zoning doesn't change, and you're left with a parcel that is partially residential, commercial, professional, and partially low-density, how does that change what, I mean, you guys have still bought the property and are still going to develop it. It's not going to stay open space. So how does that change what goes in there, what, what you're allowed to do? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Well, we really haven't thought of that.
Okay.
As, as we're, as we look at this, we, we recognize what the, what the guiding documents tell us. The guiding document says that this should be mixed use. And mixed use in Pocatello City Code says that this should be RCP. And, you know, however the zoning got there, whether it was another developer, another group of people that came and had that rezoned, part of it is RCP and part of it is low-density. I don't know the history on that. It sounds like someone might, might know what the history is. But it makes sense. If it makes sense if we follow the guiding documents, the documents that have been put together and became, you know, documented, approvable, or approved documents in the city of Pocatello on that. How does it change? I think we're going to have to take a couple of steps back and try to figure out how we, how we move from there.
Sorry.
So I have a follow-up question. I guess the question is that you said that, you know, the plan's not clear. It's kind of, you know, we'll think about it as it's rezoned. But the question is, why, why apply for this rezone now before you have a plan in place?
So, like I said, it's-
I mean, why not come back in three months or something?
We, we have, we've been working on this since October. We've been looking and planning and programming and trying to understand what works here. I guess when I, when I think of a plan, I think of, you know, design of buildings. I look at position of buildings on lots. I look at how the transportation and circulation happens throughout there. I look at buffering and different things. We believe, I mean, we have a plan for RCP on that. And how it actually lays out on the property is still up for, up for discussion amongst the, amongst JV, JG Ventures out there. So to say that we don't have a plan isn't correct. Is it enumerated? Is it placed on a map? Is it exactly what we have? Is it exactly what we want? And what we're going to be able to move forward with a preliminary plat? I don't think we're quite there yet. But the reason why we're seeking RCP is that that makes the most sense to be transitional and to be built into our business model.
Thank you.
You say you went to site review. What did you take to site review?
We took that, that, that plan up there. Yep.
And when you did that, did, was, was traffic discussed at that time? And I would just would like to state to everybody, I went up there at the site today. I was born and raised here, so I'm very familiar. I went up there at 5:15 and I went up at 5:15 on purpose. So I understand the traffic.
Was traffic discussed?
Yes.
Oh, boy, that's going to make me, I, we, I know we talked about egress access. We talked about the southern access into that, that property and the northern access. There is discussion of why we were, we were wanting to put it there. And the simple answer to that was that's where the topography was the same topography as the top-back of curb on both those sides. So instead of like digging out, you know, 30 feet of, of road cut to try to bring something in, we looked at the two areas where the topography met the top-back of curb. We talked about circulation on the inside and parking on the inside. We talked about buffers and different things with respect to location of parking and to be sensitive to the, the residents, you know, adjacent to the site.
And the geotech report is not required for this phase. It's something you were planning on using for down the road.
Right. Right. We had an opportunity, the geotech engineer had an opportunity to, to complete that work. And he went out there and did it. There is a, there was one of those mid-winter thaw's that we had. And, and he dug holes and took samples and, and did his report. But you're right. I mean, it's something that's, that's durable. The soil isn't going to go anywhere. The report will be the same today as it is next year on that type of thing. So it made sense. And we had an opportunity to do that. It did give us a better idea of what we're looking at with respect to, to slope and, and how the slope works out there.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question for now. Yeah. Merrill, we'd like to ask you a question, please.
Merrill Quell, the Public Works of Jamfords City, Pocatello.
Hey Merrill. When, when is a traffic study required?
When there's 100, 100, 100 peak hour trips.
100 peak hour trips.
Yeah, I can tell you that you're probably not going to, even with very high density there, you're probably not going to achieve that on this site. Just there. But we would look at that. And that comes in at the time of, of the, the actual buildings.
So even with, with low-density, for sure, there wouldn't be one?
No, there would be maybe an evaluation, you know, just to see where it's at. But even that's not going to tell us anything because, again, what was stated, we have about 5,000 trips on Hospital Way to the south and about eight to 10, depending on the year count, from the north. And it is a minor arterial with three lanes. And so there's not a lot you can deal with that. The city has done improvements with, we did the signal there at Hospital Way and that a few years ago. Then we turned, we came back in and there's also a right turn lane onto there. There is some other changes that can be made and everything, but just tell funding can come in to be able to do that and to work with the timing on that signal. So just, I know traffic's been talked about a lot here.
It has been.
And it always is on these. I can tell you from an engineering and traffic engineering standpoint, that these roads can handle much more traffic than, because of the way they're designed, their geometry and so forth, than what there is now, especially where they're already designated, as this one's designated as a minor arterial at this time. Also, so you know, for the traffic, as we're talking there, I'd like to bring up the bike lanes and stuff there out of the BTO reports and everything there, which we are able, the city, you know, has input and, and help and feedback from the community too. And also with the Port of Greenway, they are working with Port of Health Trust also. And it comes in with funding and stuff as it was fed and, and things look good. There are plans with the hospital that are currently underway to continue their pathway that's back behind the interstate to bring it back around over to Hospital Way, back down Center Street. And then some work also to make their way across there along Vista back over to tie into the Farm Bureau Trail. There's also plans and putting stuff together with grants to go from on a Vista to Pocatello Creek. And then also with the Flying Y, if people were engaged in the public meetings there and that, you would find that they are grading out and grading and graveling so that here in the next few years, we will have a continuous trail for alternative transportation that goes from Terry Street all the way to the Pocatello, or the Port of Wellness Center, and then up through North Gate. So that is coming along very well. So we look at traffic constantly and everything here and, and do the work that's there and have done work and have got other plans on the signal for other lanes and stuff as funding becomes available.
Okay. Thank you.
Merrill, sorry.
I'm going to close the public hearing first and then you can, this time I'm going to close the public hearing.
Merrill, I'm afraid I'm about to ask a stupid question. Building heights permitted up to 45 feet, is that from like some predetermined level, you know, from the road? Or is that for our, how far we dig down? How far do we have to dig down? If somebody builds up here versus down here at street level, can they go another 45 feet?
That is from the topography is where that is. And you would take the average too, on some of those from the front to the back. And there, there, there's other ways as we've, we've gone through there to, to do that. And Matt and Carl can do that. But I would also ask the question, what the maximum height is on low residential housing at the same time when you ask that?
Okay.
Just for curiosity.
Merrill.
But no, ask them, not me. That's their question.
What's the maximum height level on low?
Well, when they come up and ask, you can ask them that.
Hang on.
It's 35 feet.
Merrill doesn't always stand there.
Well, I try to stay in my own lane sometimes. 35 feet, right?
35. You are correct. So low-density is 35 feet?
Well, yeah. So, so 10-foot difference. And this wall's about 15 feet height, just for relative purposes.
So there won't be any 12 stories unless you're this tall?
So in, any single-family home could be 35 feet in height? One thing I would like to bring up to the commission, just looking at the code, and because there's so much concern with regards to having a plan and working it out and not allowing the whole gamut of land uses that are permitted within the RCP district. There is a code, there is a section in the code that is 17.02.17J that allows for contract agreements. So basically, and that can happen, that can happen upon a recommendation of the commission or of the council at any time during, during the process. The reason, the reason that we didn't have that at the beginning is because the, the application was specifically, was we want it to be zoned ORCP. Basically, what the contract rezoning would do is almost treat it like a conditional use permit. And so the commission may, based on all, all the testimony and all the concerns that you have here, may wish to consider to do that, to make a recommendation to the city council to look at that, look at this as a contract rezoning, which basically we, you would have to make a motion to deny it, to deny what's before you and then make that recommendation.
So with a contract rezoning, sorry, I'm trying, just trying to listen to what you're saying and also looking at the code going, oh, really? So how does that then work? They can, it's rezoned, but just for specific uses up front? Or can you explain a little bit more?
Yeah. So, so you can, you, you come to with a specific plan, just like you would with the conditional use permit and say, okay, this is what we, what we want and this is what we have, this is what we're proposing. And then if it goes through that process, then you end up into a contract agreement with the city. It's rezoned, RCP, let's say, but, but it would be only for the specific uses. So say, just professional office.
Right. You could say restaurants aren't allowed.
Yeah. You say restaurants aren't allowed. You can say apartments aren't allowed.
Okay.
Or you could say high-density but height restrictions. Oh, you go that far?
I have a question. What's the difference between that and denying it and asking the applicant to come back later?
Because there's not a zone for commercial and-
No, I'm just saying in terms of procedure-wise. I mean, why can't we see this three months later?
Yeah. And so I may, I may need some help with, from, from our legal, legal guy here. But, but they, you, you have a request before you, right? There's an application that's before you. So you have to, you have to at least act on that, make a motion on it. But, but yeah. So you're, you're saying-
I guess, I guess the thing is like, if they, they can come, always come back to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can deny it, but recommend this contract. And then they would go on to-
And then they would go on to city council with, it will be RCP, but you can't blah, 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 right?
So now you're, so the commission, basically, you may, you may recommend with findings of fact, that a contract agreement be considered by the council rather than to rezone and outright RCP.
So they would still have the same second step?
Yes.
On the city council?
Yes.
Okay. So would that, would that, you would be denying this?
So the commission may recommend with findings of fact, that a contract zoning agreement for council consideration versus the outright zoning of RCP.
So is that approving this with that recommendation?
No, you had to deny it.
A contract instead of a rezon.
And make a recommendation.
To keep the same zone.
Madam Chair, are we open for discussion?
We don't have any other questions for Matt.
Uh, yeah.
I do have one more question for Matt. If, there was one of the comments made by Stratton, I believe it was, that talked about that houses could butt up against the edge of that zone, that would be allowed, so if it remained low density, houses could indeed butt up against the houses on the back. I mean, not, not houses, but the property, there wouldn't be a buffer?
Well, if it were, if it were so divided, if it were just residential low density and you subdivided out for homes, the rear setback's going to be 20 feet.
Okay. But there would not, we would not require the developer to put any kind of buffer in?
No.
Okay. If it is rezoned, because there's a difference in zoning, they would have to put in at least a 10-foot buffer?
A 10-foot, minimum 10-foot transitional buffer.
What is, and what do the buffers look like? Is this trees, is it what?
Yeah, it's a 10-foot transitional buffer with a side obscuring fence, six feet high or wall.
Or wall.
But typically, we, yeah, we're going to want landscaping with, you know, trees and, and, you know, some of that's going to be transitioned.
It's nice, it's transitional, okay.
I think that's the only questions I have for him. Thank you.
Really pretty conflicted about this, actually. I, I mean, in general, I agree with what you said. It's not, we're not the mediators, right? So I don't really love the whole contract for rezoning. I think it sets an interesting precedent. And I think it forces us to put ourselves in the shoes of what we think is going to make them happy and the developer happy, which I think is a recipe for everybody being unhappy. So it's not a conditional use permit, which strips us of a lot of latitude, right? We could control a lot of things that were CUP, it's a rezone. So on one hand, I understand that, you know, in favor of the rezon, this land hasn't been developed, it's sat vacant. Development is generally good for cities, especially when it's infill. The plan could be nice and the comp plan does support it, right? Which typically, I think, would be enough. On the other side, there are some traffic concerns. There really likely won't be a pre-plat or a final plat meeting. I mean, we're looking at plans personally to do 100 units without any pre-plat because it's common ownership, we're not subdividing it. And I think one, one point here that was important is that RCP, I think it was written somewhere in this pamphlet, RCP is meant to serve as a transitional buffer between two different zoning districts. That's what it says. And here, the way this parcel is split into dual zoning, it actually does that, right? Like as it is, so you've got this right here being buffered from the Commercial General on the other side of it. This area that's zoned low density over here, it doesn't butt up or isn't in between Commercial General in any direction. It would just be more RCP. There's RCP or low density on every side of it. So whereas this part of the parcel, which is already zoned RCP, is buffering it between this Commercial General here to here, this isn't doing any of that. And I do understand the concern of view rights, you know, but that's generally a private property right? You know, that's meant to be fought about in the courts, generally. I don't love the idea typically of costing taxpayers, you know, money, but there's a lot of taxpayer money sitting in this room right now. I mean, probably $70,000 a year in property taxes at a minimum. I think maybe the commission should at least consider mandating mediation on this one. Maybe that's a more reasonable approach than doing a contract.
I don't know if that's something we can do because it's not a conditional use.
I clarified with Legal earlier that yes, we could mandate it without it being requested.
I have a big question, actually. So I think that's an interesting proposition. I think at the same time, I'm kind of really thinking out loud in terms of, why now? I mean, like, I guess, like, you know, the developer's not really kind of clarifying a plan or kind of, you know, threw us kind of a diagram at the last moment. And then said, you know, for me, for me too, I guess, really, I'm trying to understand, what is the justification of changing from the existing use to all throughout RCP, right? And for me, I just don't feel like there was enough clarity in terms of like, so maybe I'm kind of thinking, I mean, that's another, that led to my question of like, why now? Why not six months when there is a clear map going forward? Or kind of clear thinking going forward and how this place is used and how it's vital for all RC, you know, this whole area to be RCP?
Sheen, I wonder the cost-effectiveness of trying to create a plan for a parcel of ground that isn't yet zoned for what you would be creating that plan for? And maybe that wasn't very clear. I just wonder if, if there's no promise of him being able to use a property, how the owner intends for it, is, is there any point in creating that plan?
I mean, for us, because I think for us position, our position is to make informed decision-making. And I just feel that I'm not informed enough to make a sound judgment.
Well, to be fair, I don't know if we're supposed to consider what he's building there. We're just supposed to consider the merit of the rezon. And to, like I said, I don't know how I feel on this, but just to play devil's advocate, engineers and architects are six months out. I mean, it sucks to tie up $30,000 to do all this and then go in front of P and Z and find out, no, that's not going to be permitted. I mean, from his point of view, that's probably at least how he's feeling.
Even if they, even if they had a plan, the rezon doesn't have anything to do with that because I've seen rezoning of property where the property owner didn't develop it at all. And then someone comes along with a different plan and you have to live with whatever the new owner has for that zoning. And it has, could have absolutely nothing to do with what the previous developer had promised.
But there's consequences the other way as well.
Well, there's not, I mean, the zoning is not supposed to be tied to the plan. It's supposed to be, what do you think is, should be done with this? I like this option of a contract because that says, that gives us the option to say, all right, these people don't want restaurants, they don't want, you know, a gas, I'm sorry, grease trap, you know, dump out back. And we, there's some things that we can do and say, let's deny this, but recommend contract rezoning so that it is commercial, you know, so that it's office space, that's residential, low density, you know, apartments or maybe duplexes, something like that. As a way of, no matter who owns the property and online, if he decides he's not going to develop it because his company goes under for whatever reason, that whoever comes after that still has to abide by that contract, which you don't get with regular rezoning. I'm the one that kept saying, be careful, I said that for a reason. You be careful with zoning because you don't know who's going to own it. Even if he submitted a plan, it wouldn't be binding because that's not part of zoning. Okay, he could come up with, it's all, it's all a park and he wouldn't be binding on the zoning decision. Okay, the zoning is zoning regardless of what somebody says, well, this is what I'm imagining going in there. You have to be careful with it. That's why I like the contract rezoning because it does give us the option to control some of what's allowed that might alleviate some of the concerns that you have. Right now, that parcel that's at this end could be restaurants because it's already zoned neighborhood, commercial, professional, which me, or RCP, residential, commercial, professional, which means it could already, they can have all of those things in there right now. And he wouldn't have to ask for any zoning changes at all. I will tell you this, it's not going to be a park. If you want it to be a park, you guys should take up a collection and buy the property because the city is not going to put a park in there. This is a private piece of property.
That's true.
And, and you, I'm thrilled you've had a lovely view for all these years. Good for you. Unless you buy that property, you cannot guarantee the view you're going to have because it's private property. If you want it to be public, then the public, somebody has to buy it and give it to the city. Then the city could say, oh, thank you for the gift, we'll make this a park. I don't think that's going to happen.
Just to play devil's advocate again, as to kind of what my compatriot was mentioning, it does, however, instruct us to review the facts and circumstances of each proposal. And it instructs us specifically to consider these two questions. How the requested zoning at location in question would be in the community's best interest. And then secondly, how the list of uses permitted in the zoning ordinance would blend with surrounding land uses. So that does give you some latitude to consider what, what would be put there and maybe...
Contract rezon.
I mean, because like, the reason is...
Worry about contract rezones. I mean, if we do it once, we can do it with anything.
Yeah, you can.
When you read that, it says to me, it either needs to be, change it all to RCP or, or all to low density. You know what I mean? Because that is what's there.
I just think, sorry.
You go ahead.
Well, I think it's kind of, because I'm trying to understand, right? So because with all kind of rezoning, there's always a purpose behind it and a motive behind it. And, and it's kind of interesting because when you buy the property, you buy the property kind of already in its designation, right? So it's not like, you know, it's, it's not like this RCP and low-density residential is a shock to you when you buy it, right? It's already zoned that way when you buy it. Now, when you're trying to change the zone, you're asking for, you're doing it for a specific purpose and motivation. And I think that's kind of, for me, it's like, it could be good, it could be bad. I don't know. I just feel like there's just that ambiguity I'm trying to figure out. Like, you know, trying, we're kind of discussing trying to lift that fog to a large degree.
It's hard to answer those questions, just knowing.
Well, why don't we let them try to mediate it out before we decide to answer it for them? I mean, there's obviously some mediation to be had.
With who though?
Well, I imagine, it seems like they have...
Everybody within 300 feet?
No, I just, look, they have a representative. She told everybody to stand up, they stood up. I mean, send your, send the representative in to meet with the guys of, in planning and zoning with the applicant, he's very reasonable. If it doesn't work, we'll come back and maybe we can do the contract for rezon, right? But if it does work, why, I don't know, why interfere when citizens can work it out? If there were ever going to be a case for mandating mediation, this would probably be it. That's my only point.
I would disagree in that that's our responsibility as planning and zoning, is to take these issues at hand and try and come up with a solution. I mean, you're right, the citizens, it would be great if they could get together and mediate among that, among themselves, but that's really our responsibility. That's, that's why we have this committee.
It's just not clear.
And what do they mediate at this point? If you build this, put this, if you do this, do that, if this, then that? It's not far enough along to know that yet. And I just want to state something really quickly. The gentleman that's been speaking tonight is here representing the applicant. It's, he's doing his job. I think that's very important that you guys, we keep pointing and saying him, but he's just here doing his job so he can put food on the table at home. So that's something that's important to remember. And then I'm, and just at the same time, I'm going to remind you guys, we're volunteers. I've been in your guys' same shoes. I was in a low residential area and I have apartments going in and dusted my gutters right now, so I understand. So I just, with that, I would like to say, the majority of you were very kind to us tonight and we appreciate that. But keep those things in mind as we're discussing and making our decisions tonight.
Wait, can I ask Legal a question?
Sure.
So...
He's like, no.
You're, you're the one that told him it was okay. I have no idea what that would actually look like, though. I mean, do we deny, but since mediation, contract? I won't even know what a motion like that would even look like.
I can't tell you what to do.
I know, you're not going to tell me what to do.
If you're going to deny, I think your final action in the application is gone. You could table it in an order mediation, but I, this is one of those cases that, who is the affected person, what is mediation going to accomplish? And it...
She doesn't legally represent them, right? I mean, it would be everybody.
It'd be expensive for them, they would maybe have to hire an attorney and...
Yes.
So.
Yes. Okay. So, but that's what media, mediation is between two legal parties, two parties. So mediation between this property owner and each of the other prop, I mean, is that what legally would have, it would have to look like?
The applicant and affected party, and affected, that's, that's the two parties. Applicant, affected person.
I mean, so they spend $100 to create an LLC.
Mediations.
Well...
I mean, they can go start an LLC for $100 and give everybody a share of it and the LLC can be the one party. I mean, tomatoes, tomatoes.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Matt or maybe Jim, could, would you be willing to pull the map back up on the screen? Our zoning map cuts off short of Goldfield. Would you be willing to pull, there's a map that you guys have and somewhere in this presentation that shows the entirety of Hospital Way and its zoning. Yep, that's it.
That one?
That's it.
Yeah, so there's my dentist office right there. It's that little corner.
Question, maybe I'm not reading this right, but on the corner of Bertie Thompson, I know there is some commercial properties there, dental, dentist's office. Why is that in low density?
The one you're, the one that's kind of...
So it'd be on the north side of Bertie Thompson, on the corner of Bertie Thompson and Hospital Way, right? It might...
Oh, well, very town, the one you have Bertie Thompson is apartments.
And then you're correct, there are apartments on the south side of the road. On the north side of Bertie Thompson, I think, is Godfrey, is Michael Godfrey's...
No, I think that's...
Yes. And Mountain View Medical and Copper Summit Assisted Living.
And Copper Summit's in there too, yeah.
Yeah.
The Assisted Living Center.
All upward.
Did a pledge ceremony there.
So those are all in residential?
Yes.
Yeah. Along with high-density housing right there on the south side of, although it looks like that might be zoned.
Yeah, what's the orange zone remind me? Resit, hi, high-density.
That's where Safe Haven burned down.
Is that because a lot of this changed in 2015? Is that why some of that exists in those zones?
That's not where Safe Haven was, Safe Haven's further on down.
But I think that, yeah, I think that zoning probably goes down there. We don't see that much in the map, so it's hard to say.
So if, I'm just trying to visualize that.
As you turn onto Bertie Thompson off of Hospital Way and you're heading up the hill, on your left-hand side, there is a couple of medical offices and an assisted living facility.
Yeah, so I believe that those fell under Idaho Code as a single family, under like the definition of single family, so...
The assisted living center did?
Huh?
The assisted living center did?
Yeah, it's, it's a...
Because they don't have residence, it's small.
Yeah, it's like manly, elderly, up to 15.
Yeah.
And that's how that ended up getting built there. That's why the zoning didn't change.
So I guess my question to the commission is barring that stretch from Goldfield to Bertie Thompson, which in truth, from Goldfield to Bertie Thompson actually is probably closer to being zoned RCP than it is low-density. My question to the council is, driving down Hospital, you're surrounded by RCP, so...
Except for that one little stretch.
That we're discussing currently. So why wouldn't we change that to RCP? I understand the concerns, the NIMBY concerns, not in my backyard, but as I'm driving down Hawthorne Way, I'm already looking at RCP.
I honestly was surprised to find out it was... I honestly was surprised to find out it was because my dentist's office is right there in that little corner.
It is, it is unusual. There's also a clear delineation between Bitterroot, and it would make sense, what's being proposed, to go from basically the west side of Bitterroot, well, exactly what's being proposed, to carry that RCP-
Probably along that subdivision.
Along that subdivision line. And again, I say that with all respect to all of the concerns that have been here. But from a planning and zoning commission, what makes sense is to get rid of this little strip and convert that over to RCP. As you're driving down Hospital Way, you're already looking at RCP, you're surrounded by RCP. In fact, that's pretty much, in my opinion, and this, I don't, I've, I've lived here my whole life, but I don't live in that area, so I have, uh, this is, this isn't, anyways. I would almost think it would look more unusual to have a housing subdivision there, compared to everything else you're looking at as you drive down Sub, uh, Hospital Way.
I would think that the, that the contract rezone would, the reason I'm interested in that is because it does kind of what you're talking about. It gets that zone so that we can get more, honestly, I think it should be off, you know, medical office buildings, things like that, in proximity of the hospital, similar to what's surrounding it. But it would also, we could set it up so that some of the uses they're more concerned about, I, for example, restaurants, and I'd have to look at the other ones, but would not be allowed there. That this would be for medical office space kinds of things, with maybe some, with maybe some duplexes kinds of things that, that might be a transition. But I think that would go ways towards alleviating some of the concerns that are addressed here. The, the traffic concerns, that, that road is built to handle way more traffic than it currently has. And I know it's a busy road. It's designed to be a busy road. It's supposed to be a busy road. They'll deal with the traffic when, with, with stoplights and things, when there comes a call for it. But the road is supposed to handle much more traffic than it does. So that's not part of my concern. The traffic is not going to be routed through Bitterroot. So it's not, it's going to push on to Hospital Way, which is where it should be. So I'm kind of leaning that same direction. This makes sense. I just also understand what it means to have your neighborhood, to have concerns about what's going to go there. And a contract rezone allows us, regardless of who owns this, who ends up building it, gives us the ability to put some conditions on it so that no matter who owns it, or who it gets sold to, or if they build it out themselves, that they can build what they're planning and it puts a contract in place so that it can't be just open-ended. Some of the, some of the same restrictions that you get with a conditional use permit that aren't really allowed outright with, with a rezone. So that's kind of where I'm headed with my thinking on this, thinking out loud here.
So it remains?
We-
Low density, but an office building would be allowed?
Yeah, with, with medical office buildings, conditional rezone?
I think it, I think it'd probably become RCP, but have restrictions, right?
So we would have to come up with those restrictions tonight?
But-
I, yeah, I-
Did anybody bring snacks?
Although I-
That's going to inform us.
I should have brought a lot of water. I apologize, for whatever reason. Um, no, that-
How does this work out?
You're, you're not, you're not making all of the conditions or, you know, whatever. So, um, you, you're, what you're, what you would be recommending, again, is acting on this application, right? Either denying it, if you want to go contract rezoning direction, and, um, where's my- And basically recommending to the council, the city council, that in this case, that they wish, that they should consider the contract rezoning option on this.
And then they'd have to work it out.
Based on, based on the code section.
I got it wrote down.
Got it right down.
So-
And then they-
And then, and then, what, what would happen is, in the event a contract zoning agreement is deemed appropriate by the city council, the developer or owner shall execute an agreement with the city that shall be reviewed, and they have some criteria underneath, under there. And it's under number five of that same section.
So, I'll just read it so everybody knows. So it says, "In the event a contract zoning agreement is deemed appropriate by the city council, the developer or owner shall execute an agreement with the city that shall be reviewed and approved for form by the city attorney prior to final council action. The agreement shall contain the provisions set out below, and once executed by the developer or owner, shall be presented to the council for its approval. Minimum provisions shall include: identification of uses to be allowed under the agreement, identification of development standards that shall be required under the agreement, planned implementation of improvements and planned construction completion schedule, required surety for project completion in a ban, if abandoned or otherwise uncompleted, a provision that the owner developer acknowledges and agrees that failure to comply with these terms of agreement shall result in a rezoning of the real property to zoning district existing immediately prior to the execution of the agreement. A provisions, a provision specifying that the agreement and all conditions, terms, duties, and obligations included in said agreement shall be in-"
Skip.
Skip. Shall be included with the real property and shall run with the land. Any other matter, and any other matter required by city council. So this pretty much is mediation, but it narrows it down. You know what I mean? So that, yeah.
I mean, what this has in here, then, is that the uses to be allowed, so they'd have to come up with the provisions, so that this is the uses that would be allowed, and the development standards, which means that they have to say, what's this going to look like? Are, how many trees, what, how many setbacks, things like that? And how they're going to implement the improvements and the planned completion schedule, so that you have the plan. This is asking for the plan that you all are saying that you want, is what a contract rezone does.
Yeah, it's-
Go ahead.
Although I'd rather always see people figure things out than, than have the, some governing body get involved, it might be a happy medium. I mean, if a developer has come to us with a rezone that's based on our underlying comprehensive plan, you, you can't like, say no to that, or you're telling investors and developers not to come to our town. And, you know, you can't complain about not having anywhere to live and also lock developers out, right? So like, it probably is important to maintain our integrity. So maybe, maybe that's the middle ground.
Can I ask you one more question? I just, I, I think, I just want to make sure we're on the right track, because I don't want somebody to make a motion and it be wrong. So if we are going to carry on with, and require a contract zoning agreement, do we approve or deny the zone change?
You would deny the zone change.
Okay, thank you.
And it gets kicked out to go before the city council.
That's cor- that's correct, with your, your recommendation for the contract zoning.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We approve it and it gets kicked out to go before the city council.
No matter.
Either way, it goes to the city council. But with your recommend, denial with the recommendation of contract zoning.
Right. Can I ask a follow-up question? With regards to, kind of, there's a lot of concerns that was raised. I mean, who, like, for contract zoning, rezoning, who specifies that, those conditions?
The city council.
It really is the city council.
Well, it says that the developer and the planning will get together and do it.
Yeah.
But I also want to bring something up. Yes, there's 60, there's not a lot of concerns. There are a lot of people concerned. Over half this stack is the same letter signed by somebody else. So, not that we shouldn't address those. So it's not that there's a lot of concerns, there's a lot of people concerned.
About the same things.
About the same similar thing.
One potential restriction maybe, right?
The height, is that what you're referring to? So the question I would ask to the council is, given the elevations of 78 feet, is there going to a different, be a difference between 35 and 45 feet? I-
That's, okay, the contract rezone is not for us to decide.
Right, right. But he's saying, is it worth going through that?
But it's also uses, it wasn't just that. It wasn't just the height, it was also uses, it was restaurants, it's-
Apartments was an issue too, so.
Well, I think the height, well, and traffic, yeah.
Yeah. Traffic and noise and, anyway.
I think it's good that contract rezoning would kind of ask the developer to give us, give, I guess, the city council a little more clarification on what exactly they're planning to do. And that whether it kind of supports the purpose of the rezoning, so.
And that would give the residents the opportunity to fine-tune their comments to send to city council beforehand? Or is that not a public hearing?
Will all of these comments go to city council?
Yes.
Yes.
Refine their comments.
Yes, and that is, that is also a public hearing still, before the city council.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
That was a hands, everyone.
I'm going to make a motion. Ready? I move to recommend denial of the Zone Map Amendment application from JG Ventures LLC to rezone the subject property located in the 700 block of Hospital Way. Finding the application does not meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.170 of Pocatello City Code. Finding that-
Sorry.
That, um, and to authorize the chair to sign the findings in fact, and to recommend to city council to consider contract rezoning according to Chapter 1702.170-J in the Contract Rezone section of City Code.
Are you going to have to repeat that number? I have to type everything you said?
What?
Well, the only, the only thing that was different, all of it's the same.
I need, I need your-
It's a subsection J that just specifically talks about contract rezoning. So recommend to council to consider, Matt, tell me what to say, to consider contract rezoning for this parcel in accordance with 17.02.170, Section J.
I second that.
I have a motion by Hewlett, a second by Worrell. Aisling, will you call vote?
Hewlett?
Yes.
Worrell?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Phillips?
No.
Rue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's just me writing it down, I realized, I wrote it down on the wrong motion.
Oh, sorry, I was just taking notes everywhere.
That's why I was doing, no, I had written it down.
Okay, I would like to remind everybody that we still have three more agenda items, so. Please step outside and visit.
I feel like I'm the bad luck. I, I joined it, everything's been contentious, every item's been contentious since.
It was, when I was on signing the zoning before, it was right in the hospital building. Just madness, just madness.
But I think the more correct-
Let me ask you guys this. She read it word for word, the denial, and it says that.
Actually, the cor-
Other reasons, other reasons. Okay, we are moving on to agenda item number seven. This is a public hearing for Zone Map and Comprehensive Plan Amendment, File 22-085. Jared, Jared Keller of Pocatello Creek Center LLC has submitted a zone map and a comprehensive plan amendment to rezone the subject property from residential medium-density, single-family to commercial general, and to amend the comprehensive plan designation from mixed-use to commercial for property located at 920 Dion. I'm not going to go through the reminders about the public hearing, because I think you guys have heard them all enough, but please follow those. At this time, I would like to declare the public hearing open, and I would invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to thank you all for your time. I recognize that this meeting's ran a little bit later than meetings of the sort typically go. My name is Jared Keller. I am with the Pocatello Creek Center LLC at 920 Dion. I am here to request a change in our current zoning from RMS to commercial general. We feel that correcting the zoning designation will enable this property to become more aesthetically appealing, and perhaps of equal value, of value, more contextually relevant to the current neighboring cluster of commercial properties in that vicinity. Many of the neighboring properties enjoy direct frontage along Pocatello Creek, like our property on 920, 920 Dion. The difference is, all of the neighboring properties that are, of commercial use currently have a commercial general designation where we do not. The intent of this change is more in line with correction than change, as this property has been used for commercial use since it's been built. The proposed zoning district change from RMS to CG is being requested as much as this property has never had a residential appeal or use, and nor, nor does, do we have any intent to use it as residential purposes in the full, in the, in the near future. But rather, we plan on continuing its use as commercial general and having similar business types that have always been there. At this point, it's just correcting the commercial general designation so we can apply for signage that's appropriate to the building. With that said, I have no further comments to make, but are there any questions?
Uh, commission, any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Why commercial general and why not RCP? I mean, the neighboring property is RCP, why not?
Sure, in talking to, I wasn't even aware that we needed to change it, but this came up when we were trying to put signage up. And I was instructed that, to get the type of signage that the properties across the street have, we need to be commercial general. Whether it was commercial general or RCP, I, I honestly don't have a big difference in others.
Tall signs?
Uh, no, they allowed us, this wouldn't be anything like that. They, they allowed us to put a monument sign out front. This would just be about an eight to 10-foot sign above the door going into the building, so, so the businesses can advertise their business use.
And this property has never had a residential use?
No, not to my knowledge. As far as I know, it's always, I believe it was built initially to be a big real estate brokerage, and, and then it's had a few uses since then that were business-related.
Thank you.
I have any questions?
Okay, at this time, I think, I would like to invite staff.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Jim Englesee, long-range planner for the city. The request is to rezone the subject property from residential, medium-density, single-family to commercial general, and to amend the comprehensive plan map designation from mixed-use to commercial. As already stated, the subject property already has a multi-tenant, commercial building on it, and has been that way for, for quite a bit of time. The subject property is currently designated mixed-use and is surrounded by residential and commercial designations. Surrounding land uses include Foothill Plaza, a multi-tenant, commercial complex, a residential neighborhood, a church, a fire station, and a vacant lot owned by the city. The subject property has been developed and established prior to the current zoning ordinance, which would make this property legal non-conforming. Regardless of its zone, it's always acted as commercial and has not, to the knowledge of staff, ever had residential use. This has been noticed in accordance to city and state requirements, and we have not received any written comment from the public regarding the application. And staff finds that the proposal is compliant to all standards for rezone and comprehensive plan amendment. And this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this seems like we're doing the very thing that the- Okay, so this seems like we're doing the very thing that the last application. We're carving out a little piece of commercial surrounded by neighborhood and by mixed use. All the rest of it is, is residential, is residential, commercial, okay? The, the fire station, all of that other stuff. Why commercial? Why not just go for a mixed use, use here? It hasn't always been commercial property. It's been office space. It has not been a fast food restaurant. It has not been anything with a lot of traffic. It's always been offices, which seems more in line with the RCP zoning than commercial.
And the current designation is that mixed use, which would call for an RCP zone.
Right.
As the applicant stated.
It's just about a sign?
The issues have been signage in the past. And just a little bit of background. When they got their monument signed for the building, the hearing examiner at the point, at that point, gave a condition that the individual businesses could not have their own individual wall sign because it was in residential. If it went to RCP, those conditions would still exist regardless of the zone. If you go to commercial, those, those opportunities open for individual signage on the wall, which is the whole reason why they went for a rezone.
Is it because of the sign?
In RCP, they wouldn't be permitted for the signage that they would want.
They would have to ask for an exception, a sign exception? No?
In the condition, in the conditions, it also states that a sign exception would not be reviewed because that sign that they got was a sign exception.
Okay.
Could they do a text amendment, maybe? A little bit easier than that?
Text amendment, rezone, or the, the rezone would, would, would give them opportunity for additional signage.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Do you, looking at this, where we have, well, either, either the, the comprehensive plan or the zone, we leave the road area different. You know what I'm saying? So we change it to general, commercial, and change it to commercial, but then we still have the mixed use around it or the medium density around it. Do you see that being a, any kind of, I mean, it's a road, but.
With roads, we connect the zones. And so the strip of road wouldn't just be RCP. We extend the commercial over.
Okay.
Because it's gonna be a road, it's not gonna be any other use.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
So because this is an existing building, and I'm sorry, I can't remember, what kind of buffering is around it between this property and the residential? Would there have to be additional buffering put in around it?
Because it's legal non-conforming, they don't, they don't have to adhere to that unless it's redeveloped in a, in a different way.
So it could be commercial with no buffering around it and further down the road, somebody could tear it down and put in.
Maybe require a transitional buffer at that point.
Then it would, because it's, okay.
Well, and it's so, it's so small.
It is little, it's really little.
There's nothing big going in there.
Yeah.
Because it can only be 45 feet.
Yeah. Which we know now.
Even if it was commercial general, we also have restrictions on height because it's so close to residential zone.
Okay. And what about lighting, sign lighting? Is there any restrictions on that? I mean, we've got some pretty bright signs out there. Is there restrictions on that?
Currently, for residential and, and RCP, it would have to be an opaque background, but they can still have cabinet signs and all of that. If it's a, if it would be an electronic sign, there's a curfew, but they can still have an electronic sign.
They have to go through the sign permit process.
Right, they have to go through the sign permit process to have that reviewed. All right.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No?
Okay. Okay, thank you. So.
Did you open the public hearing? Okay.
So at this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony supporting the application to come forward. Anyone uncommitted? Anyone opposing? Rebuttal?
Okay.
So at this time, I declare the public hearing closed. And how would the commission like to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion to approve the application. Move to recommend approval of the zone map and comprehensive plan amendment application from Jared Keller of Pocatello Creek Center LLC to rezone and amend the comprehensive plan designation for the property located at 920 Dion Drive. Find the application does meet the standard for approval under Chapter 17.02.170 of Pocatello City Code and to authorize the chair to sign the findings of the facts. Second?
I have a motion by Rue and a second by Phillips. Aisling, will you call vote?
Rue?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Hewlett?
No.
Yes.
Worrell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We should have done some of that fancy dual zoning and just put a small strip of CG right where the sign was gonna be.
Okay. We are on to Agenda Item 358.
Look at us go.
Agenda Item Eight, Public Hearing Preliminary Platte. Wright Town Homes File 22780. Taylor Wood of Res Dev II LLC, represented by Summit Land Surveying, has submitted a preliminary plat application to subdivide 0.72 acres more or less into 10 lots. The proposed subdivision is a replat of Lot 7 and 12, Block 3, Ward Park subdivision. The proposed subdivision is located between Heber and Wright Avenues. At this time, I will declare the public hearing open and I would like to invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commission. Good night as well. We are requesting to turn these two parcels into 10 parcels. We are planning to do five, two, five unit townhomes. These townhomes will have off-street parking, both a garage and a driveway.
What's your name?
Yep, sorry, Taylor Wood.
Oh, I knew it, that's why I didn't, sorry. Thank you.
Hi. So there'll be a garage and two, two-car garage and then obviously a driveway. The square footage of each lot is less than, is, is more than what is mandated by the infill standards by 45% given the current zoning of RMS. Given that we are 45%, we could do up to 14 units on the two parcels that are currently there, but we only want to do 10. The square footage of each of these townhouses is 1,600 square feet, which is larger than most of the twin homes that surround it. On one side, you have twin homes. On the other side, you have an assisted living center. There are some single-family homes in the area as well. We plan on doing three beds, two and a half bath, 1,600 square foot townhouses. Behind them, behind the two five-unit buildings, there will be a large open space of about a quarter acre. I believe that this is actually a really good opportunity for potential homebuyers in the community because we are short on affordable housing in the area and there are very, very few new construction, affordable housing. So this is an awesome opportunity in an area that works with the current code. Any questions?
So, yes, so your plan is that in, in back of, in back of these two, that that remain an open area?
It is like a backyard. I mean, I'm just saying, it's still like.
It's not gonna have a fence between all of it, it's.
It is, what I'm saying is that there's still a ton of square footage here between, after the, the units are built, there's still a big amount of space. We're not trying to jam pack. We could, we could, I mean, we could increase our amount of units by 40%, but we want to obviously make it be a comfortable place for the people who are going to be living there.
A quarter acre grass landscaping there.
Yeah, exactly. Any other questions from the commission?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, hang on, you'll get your opportunity now. At this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony.
No, no, no.
Oh. We've heard from you guys enough tonight. Sorry, Matt. Trying to get it over with, you guys.
So, commission members, the request is again for preliminary approval of Wright Town Home Subdivision. The proposed subdivision is a replat of Lot 7 and 12, Block 3, Ward Park subdivision. The proposal calls for a plating of 0.72 acres more or less, again, into 10 townhome lots. The proposed subdivision is located between Heber and Wright Avenues. The subject property is owned residential medium density, single family. The minimum lot size for a single-family dwelling in, or for townhome, townhomes in RMS is 4,000 square feet. The smallest lot is proposed at 3,484 square feet more or less. The applicant's desires of utilizing the infill and redevelopment standards of Title 17 zoning regulations in order to meet the minimum lot size requirement. In this case, they meet two of those criteria. One is the parcel has less than 300 feet of frontage along the street, public street. And the second is the parcel is no larger than two and a half acres. In this case, it's 0.72. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the existing property boundaries have been provided notice of the public hearing. In order, that day may provide comment on the application. Notice was also published in the Ohio State Journal on March 25, 2022, and his sign was posted on subject property on March 29, 2022. All notices herein described have been provided at least 15 days' notice and there is no comments that staff has received. Staff finds that the proposal is compliant with all applicable standards with the conditions outlined. Net. That concludes my presentation.
Shouldn't any questions for staff?
I actually have a question. So typically, I'm kind of curious on the application of the infill kind of requirements because typically when you apply an infill requirement, it's really for the city center for more walkable, kind of with public transportation access areas. So kind of, and also an area that's been maybe, maybe dilapidated that needs to kind of revitalization. This is kind of odd that you're applying infill development to this particular area, especially since this is a new development area.
Yeah, well, the code, the code allows it. It doesn't say that it has to be in a specific area. If they meet those criteria, they can use, they can utilize the infill standards.
And the second question is that if, due to the spacing or kind of the size, when I drove this around this area, this kind of, I guess, the density will actually stand out compared to its surroundings. Could you address that question?
Yeah, it's, they're, they're smaller in terms of the area lots and so forth. But like I said, the, the ordinance or infill development centers will allow them to take advantage of that.
Okay, thank you.
Sheena, if I understood you correctly, said they'll be smaller than the ones around them and for their reason stand out?
Yeah, it basically, it's why when I drove around them, you divide the spaces into five.
Yeah.
Clearly be like half the size of surrounding. It, it's odd because like, I guess, this, the density itself is, because my understanding of infill development laws, it seems like there's a loophole in that kind of infill development.
Perhaps, or is, we'll have to look at it, but.
Can I see your codebook? If I understand correctly, the house size, square footage size will be bigger. Well, and that's, that's just what we heard from the applicant, but square footage size will be nearly 1,600 foot of each home. Each home will be nearly 1,600.
I mean, from my perspective. Because we can save that for discussion, but.
Sure.
And you're considering that they're duplexes, though? That they look bigger on here, but they're duplexes, right?
Like, what do you mean?
Like these next, these are duplexes?
Yes, I do understand they're duplexes, but you want to do kind of calculate the duplex size in terms of width, it's still.
It's still about two and a half units versus five in that same area?
Yep.
If you just.
I don't have any questions.
Huh?
I don't have any questions, you can just wait and sit down.
Okay.
Just gonna wander off.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to invite anybody who is supporting the application to provide testimony. Anybody uncommitted to the application that would like to provide testimony? Anybody opposed to the application that would like to provide testimony? Make sure you state your name, please.
I am Stephen Rodriguez. I live on Heber Avenue. My concerns are with the high density. The, it's not going to match the neighborhood. To be 1,600 square feet, you'd either have to do a basement, which is cool, but if you choose to go vertical, then it'd be the only two stories in the neighborhood. So based on the proposal, there is, of the smallest units, because my, my concern is with five. I think it's appropriate to match what's existing and divide it by two or possibly even three, because it is slightly bigger than the lot that I live on. But the smallest unit, you know, the staff already brought up the issue of it's not the 4,000 square feet per lot. The front yard would be about 600 square feet, give or take, which, ordinance 170, sorry, 10 point, sorry, wow, 17.05.610. B2B would state that a single-family driveway can only take up 55% of the drive, of the front yard. If it's truly gonna be two-car garage, then that would take up 80% if it matches my two-car driveway. If you did single, then it would be 48%, which then would comply. But if you drove on Mountain West or Valley West, you would see that they're following code 18.63.03, sorry, 030, which calls two each off-street, one enclosed, one not. And there is clearly a off-street parking issue there. You know, in evening time, when everybody's home from work, you drive down the road and you gotta pull in and park, let somebody else pass, get back out on your way.
Mountain West, is that directly adjacent to the Home Depot?
Uh, not adjacent, it's just north of Heber. Uh, so it's, it's opposite Hawthorne from Home Depot.
Got it. The one that you can see right above there?
Correct, yep. So, correct. Yep. So if you look, yeah, to the next street north on that drawing picture. So tying in with that, those are subdivided, I think, to four. In a large area, he's trying to squeeze five into a small area. So undoubtedly, if you don't do a two-car driveway, you're gonna have an on-street parking issue. Another code 18.24.040E states that the minimum width of a single-family home lot would be 26 feet. So again, I just think that the amount of plats should be reduced and that I would not have an issue with this. Thank you.
Matt? Sorry, I was gonna ask a question. I can wait. Matt, does infill also affect the, the required widths of the lot can, can change? But the parking, the driveway can? But the parking, the driveway can't change, correct?
Yeah, they would still have to meet that minimum, as the gentleman indicated.
Okay. But they don't have to be the 26 feet with the infill requirement?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Matt, what's the minimum width that a driveway can be? Nine feet?
Depends on if it's a one-car or two-car. Usually, it's going to depend on like, you know, that 55%. But your two-car garage is typically going to be probably 24 feet in width, somewhere in there.
There's a, sorry.
Or not 24, like 12.
There's a specific, there's a specific guidance given for infill. I just lost it. Specifically, that says driveways shall not cover more than 1/3 of the front yard.
Yes.
So how is it possible on these middle lots, if they're 25 feet, how is it possible that any driveway could exist without disqualifying that for infill qualifications? Because if, if it were 10 feet, then that's more than 1/3. If it were 9 feet, that's more than 1/3. If it's a dual-car garage on the edges, then that's 12 feet, that's more than 1/3. Wouldn't that disqualify it from meeting infill guidelines?
I guess here's this, do they have to have a driveway?
No.
Yes.
Well, you know, they have to have two off-street parking spaces.
Absolutely.
Okay.
They do. And might I add, it seems to say as well as one off-street parking spot, which might also be compromised, because the driveway has to have unparkable area so you can get into it, right?
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm reading that directly from, I'll give that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
My name is Barbara Marshall. I live directly next door to this property on the right side of the street. So I'm on Wright Avenue, directly next door to the property. We have a couple of major concerns. One is that we're right next door to the, to the care centers. And we have emergency vehicles there at least once a week and maybe more. And if the street becomes more impacted by parking, on-street parking, they're going to have trouble getting the emergency vehicles in there to take care of the, of the people in the care center. Are these, do these have two stories? Is that what you're planning on?
You have to address the commission.
I'm sorry, okay. I just needed to clarify the stories. If there are, if there are two stories, they are not going to fit into our neighborhood. All of our neighborhood are one-story houses. These are going to stick out like a sore thumb. They, they're going to bring down property values possibly. They, if they're owned, who's going to take care of the middle green, green space? Who's going to take care of that space? Is, if that's owner property, where are they going to get their lawn mowers from their garage to their property in back? Who's going to take care of that? Especially if they start putting up fences through there. So they're going to have to take their lawnmower out through the garage.
It's going to be individually owned, just like yours.
So, so the middle, so.
Will be, oh, be their backyards.
So the middle two of them, the middle three, how are they going to take care of their property?
That's their problem.
Yeah, she's trying to say, how do you get equipment back there?
Yeah, they, they wouldn't have access to their own property. Their, okay, possible water problems. If they are rentals, then we start looking at more than one family per unit, which would again be a, a parking problem. Thank you for your time. It's been a horrendous day. You guys have had the worst of it, but thank you for your time. And we ask that you find in our favor in making these a little bit more compatible to our own neighborhood. Thank you.
Anybody else opposed?
We're opposed.
No, you would like to testify, sorry.
You don't, you don't get to vote, you have to come testify.
You guys aren't here for fun?
My name is Alan Steed. I live at 4140 Reno Drive, which is right across the street from these. And I, I just want to say I'm opposed. I've got the same issues as, that has already been mentioned.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to testify in opposition?
Everybody needs to go say that. I'm opposed. So you know that we're all opposed.
Would anybody else like to testify in opposition?
Do we all have to get up and say we're opposed to it?
No.
No, no, just if you would like to get up.
If you want it, if you want it to be part of the public record, that you were opposed, you need to step up, say your name, and say I'm opposed. Otherwise, it won't be part of the record. The only people that will come and be opposed are the three that have spoken.
My name is Deanna Steed, and I live on 4140 Reno Drive. Thank you, councilman, for driving in our neighborhood and seeing the situation. What they're proposing will not match our neighborhood. It's a quiet, beautiful neighborhood, and parking is important. The driveway, driveway situation is absolutely something we're concerned about. So thank you, and we do hope you will decide on our behalf.
I'm Donna Ball, and I live on Wright Avenue. And I think as a.
One second, we want to make.
Yeah, I have to get caught up.
Oh, okay.
Still finishing the first person before you, so give me five seconds. Okay, what is your name? Donna Ball, B-A-L-L. Okay, and I live on Wright Avenue. And I'm in one of the newer constructions. So some of our neighbors have been there, I think, since the early 2000s. And we're the, the 2020, 2021 edition. And I think that we have been an asset to the neighborhood because we fit in and we have beautiful yards. And you start, we're not opposed to having that lot built on. It's just what they're choosing to build on it is the issue. So that, as I've said, it's fits in with us. And the other thing is already, if, if, I don't know if you're the corner house on Reno, but when they, sometimes even the people that work at the assisted living, park in front of those houses that are down a block from us, across from the assisted living. And if that becomes a parking issue with this new one, they're going to park in front of the assisted living, because some hours of the day, there's only a skeleton crew there, like in the evenings. So there's available, available parking on both sides, on Heber and on Wright. And if they start parking there, and like you say, if you have emergency vehicles, or they have extra help come in, or those people don't move their cars, I really think parking is going to be a big issue. I know we all have two-car garages, but when someone comes to visit, they've got to, or stay with you, they've got to have a place to put their car and still get out of your garage. And so I hope that you will look at those kinds of things and make them tweak it so that there's three, three units instead of five. Thank you.
I'm Brody Orgel. I live on Heber Avenue, and thank you guys for your time. I just wanted to bring to you guys' attention also, along with the parking issues, obviously, the fire hydrants are in front of the new build, I guess you could call it, the plot that we're looking at right now. So I feel like that should be an added worry for us as residents that are there right now, especially being so close to the senior center. I just wanted to also bring that to you guys' attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Fix, and I live at 4134 Reno Drive. And my house sits right in front of Riley Road, which is right then Riley, the two streets that connect with Sunny Brook. Riley Road goes, if somebody came right straight down Riley Road, Riley Road, they would run right into my house, because I'm at the corner, because Reno Drive is very short. And I agree with everything that's already been said, the congestion. There's only a few ways to get out of that area, and that is go down Wright, Riley, or out towards Hawthorne to Snowbird Pass, the assisted living center. And so that would be very congested, and there would be a lot more traffic that would be there. And I agree that it is not, it does not fit our neighborhood. We're a very quiet neighborhood. Everybody looks out for each other. We all talk, we know what's going on, and everybody is very important there. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
My name's Elaine Kent, and I live at 1271 Wright Avenue. So I'm right across the street from that lot. And I don't want to look out and see two-story apartments that are running, or building, or homes that are running the opposite direction of everything else, plus the parking. And I'm also concerned about the water and sewer. Is it going to sustain, it won't sustain that many, I don't believe, in that neighborhood? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Diger. I live on Wright Avenue. Couple of, a couple of ones up from this open area. I'm going to second everything that everybody's saying. Something I wanted to add, though, that hasn't been said but is true. There is no parking lot for either of the assisted livings that are on the corner. So that, and I don't know, I guess a building can be built with no parking lot, because they are all along the street. So I just, that is the reason for it. There's no opportunity for there to be any off-parking for them. So they have to be on the street. I had heard the story from somebody else. Somebody had a garage sale on their corner. A ambulance came down, and everybody from the garage sale had to move because all the, you know, so there's no extra room for any parking. And I also want to second that we have a, a problem with the, with the water pressure in some of the homes around there. The builder had acknowledged it to the folks behind us. We don't have that much of a problem, but I do, I am also concerned about the pressure should these go in, especially five of them. Don't have a problem with something going in, that amount, I think, is the problem for most of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to provide testimony in opposition to the application? No? At that, I will give the applicant a chance to rebuttal.
I appreciate. Can I, can I talk to them a little bit, too?
You can talk to me about what you want to say to them.
Okay. I appreciate the people behind me, their feedback. I think that's, it's very helpful, and I'm happy to see people participating here. I'm going to address these line item by line item, not necessarily in the order that they were presented. The assisted living center is a much different aspect and different build than twin homes. And if it was today that the assisted living center wanted to come in and be there, it'd probably have pushback as well, because it's different. But the assisted living center fits within the code there. Secondly, the assisted living center, though not two stories, is actually the height of about two stories, given the width of the building. So people behind me, I, I hear you, but that's also, it's about the same height that it would be regardless. When we, when we came through this, to this development, we, we talked and worked closely with the city to make sure it fits the code. So it does fit, as per the, the staff recommendations, it does seem to fit the, the code. Now, as far as the, the fire hydrants, fire hydrants are actually on, per the survey, they're on each end of the property, so it should not be in the way of any driveways that are put in. If they are, we did go through a site plan review with the fire department, and they have, as far as they're concerned, they've reviewed this as well. And there is not a concern with that. If something, if a fire hydrant needed to be moved, that would be something that would fall on us. But as far as the plan goes, that should not have to, to be moved. And I, I do want to be clear that they're townhomes, and they're really not much different than a twin home. You basically have a neighbor on both sides of you, but your community that you have is still going to exist. You're not, I'm not, these aren't rentals, they're individually owned properties. So I, I don't think you're saying, your community isn't, the community won't go away. Your community will be there, you'll just have more neighbors. And they're individually owned people, just like you are. And their houses are, are amply sized, they're not small little units. I mean, that's something that the company that's developing it takes pride in the development in what they're building and making sure it's architecturally pleasing. We don't want to build something that is going to not last, something that's going to be trendy, something that won't be beneficial for the community in the long term. I think that's really important for my companies to build, my, our MO is to build responsibly. So we've put a lot of time into designing these, and I'm sorry that we don't have any architectural drawings presented here. I can show them to you after. We wanted them to look beautiful. As far as who's going to mow the backyard, there is an HOA to take care of it. So if it's individually responsible, great. If not, it's the HOA that will be, will be taking care of the landscaping there. The water and sewer, and whether or not that's sustainable, I have not heard a concern of that from the city. I've worked with Merrill specifically on this. Merrill, I don't know if you're still here, if you're still here. I don't know if you've heard that complaint before or not. Obviously, that's something to consider, but I, I had never heard that. And that would be something that Merrill would probably, or the engineering department would bring up to us. But we've gone over this preliminarily, and we have not had the pressure concern. Once again, this is, it is RMS infill standards do apply to this. We want to build something that's beneficial to the community. We are in a kind of a transitional zone between assisted living center to twin homes and single homes. You have an amalgam of different properties in this area. So I don't, I don't feel like it, I want to help the community, I want to be beneficial to the community. That's why we're doing 10 and not 14. I want to build something that looks good and is going to be beneficial to your community. I understand that it's frustrating to see change, but ultimately, we want to see something is good for the community. The city really needs low-income housing, I shouldn't say low-income, affordable housing, because there isn't much. I think I've addressed most of the concerns. I don't know if I have addressed all of them, but I thought I made a list of most of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. This time, I will declare the public hearing closed. I think my, I'm, I'm just wondering if the, Merrill? But how wide does a, is there a limit, max or min for a driveway?
That would be on the private side and as far, is that what you're trying to say? I, we've been looking for the 1/3, I'm sorry, I still can't find it.
I haven't, I haven't read here.
I don't want to prolong this. I have a bedtime hour at, at 1:30.
Two hours ago?
But I would say, you know, you're going to be about a minimum of nine foot minimum on a, a driveway from an engineering point of view. I mean, I'm just there, concrete and trying to put a driveway in. That way, I'd say, if it was me doing with the truck and everything that I'm doing on my property, I wouldn't go any narrower than nine foot. Either that, because then if you do that, you're going to be stepping out directly onto the grass if you're probably, or, or there, if you're narrower than nine. That's where I think we're at. Is that the question you asked?
Yeah.
I don't, I've never seen that written anywhere or anything, because.
But it is right there.
But the 1/3.
Has to be 1/3.
And, I mean, a minimum size for a parking spot is 9 by 18, right? And if you're going to do maneuvering area, because you're going to be driving in and out, it should be a little bit bigger, so probably 10. And if these are two-car garages, you can't somehow do.
Can't just magically.
What it says, it's 1/3, is what it says, so it's, it would be.
1/3 to frontage.
But the thing is, is.
The maximum is 1/3 of the front?
Minimum.
The minimum.
Minimum.
So.
So if it's 45 feet, then how wide can your?
45 divided by 3?
15 feet.
So the twin homes then?
Did you find it? Yeah.
Don't match that.
So the 1/3 applies, it does not apply in this section, it's in our original town site section.
1705350.
Yeah, it's in, so that applies to the original town site, which this is not in. So we're at, I'm in 7, actually, 1704220. 226D, sorry, 6B.
This.
That's the only, that's the only place I've ever seen.
Come look at 170.
This is residential infill and redevelopment standards. I mean, you could do an administrative adjustment, right, for 10%, but even then, if they were 10 feet, you still wouldn't have enough. Could I see that one more time?
Pull up the code, thank you. Just click on, oh, there you go, you got it.
It's a small keyboard over here.
It's under government. And then on the, there you go. That's where I have to go to find it. I didn't know if you had a special link.
I, it's...
Private link for people who care.
This book might be a little bit old.
So, and, and that's, um, one thing I wanted to bring to the commission's attention. So the online version is the up-to-date version of our infill development standards, where they were recently amended. Um, it's possible that the...
What set, what one was that? Oh five what?
Oh five point three five zero.
Okay, so it is removed. Sorry if I gave you a heart attack.
Parking area should be located behind buildings.
Oh.
Yeah, it does say parking areas...
The parking area has to be wherever possible.
Which this wouldn't be possible due to setbacks.
Well, it'd be possible if there were four units.
Visual screening for mechanical.
I mean, I, I wanted to do three tiny homes on that lot and I had enough land to do it, but I wasn't allowed to because they, the rule with it having to be off the alleyway, it was that it wasn't, uh, was that it was possible, so it had to be.
On the alleyway there, though, right?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so we've gone 362. It's all right. No, it's good to know.
Um...
But just so I'm clear, the driveway standard does not apply in this situation.
No.
'Cause they've dropped the driveway standard.
What driveway standard does apply, is it 55%?
The, the 45% frontage still does, though.
Okay. And a, and a two-car driveway, if a parking spot has to be...
So if they have a, if they, if they have a, a garage, we're gonna count, that's gonna be one space and then a space in the driveway.
Right, but a two-car driveway. If a parking spot, if they have two parking spots side by side, I have to be nine by 18.
Two-car garage.
So you're saying they have to go...
Yeah, well, that's what they said they were. So I'm saying if two cars have to access the driveway, that means it's gotta be, it has to be 18 feet, no?
They can go in and then it gets wider.
And then it gets wider. I see.
Okay, so the standard that applies for the front yard is that 45% of it must be...
Not more than 45%.
Not more than 45%.
Can be driveway.
Yeah, right.
Can be driveway.
Okay, okay.
So you have your, you have your landscaping and then the rest can be impervious.
My application is not for the building permit, though. So the building permit will have to, to match that.
Meet that, meet the standard.
But what, I'm, my application to date is not applying for that.
Because it meets the infill standard.
Right. Except for if we approve this and then you find out later, you don't have enough room to even put a driveway in.
Sure, sure, sure.
It's gonna steep, so I wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Are we discussing the item?
Sure, yeah.
This would actually be an inappropriate use of infill ordinance, actually. Because infill, if you look at understanding of where the infill, uh, infill kind of ordinance came from, the history of that is basically to revitalize the city in kind of old center areas.
Could somebody pull up the new infill? What, what designates things as infill? The, the two of five that they have to meet?
Two of three.
Well, on that one, there's five.
Those are five.
It's two of three and...
Which one, oh, yeah, the two of three.
The old version in your book, Chris, was five.
The two of three, so, let's see, you have, they, they meet, they meet two of three, which is they have less than 300 feet of frontage, or no more than 300. And, um, the acreage is less than two and a half acres.
Does infill say anything about the, would two-story homes be allowed in this, these townhomes? Does infill have anything to say about that?
They can build the 35, just like any other home. You go vertical and so...
Okay. So, our infill, regardless of what the concept of infill is for, our infill standard, this meets the requirements for infill.
Because of, because of the two criteria.
Because of those two criteria. It meets the standards for infill according to our code. And as for how he's gonna put driveways in and how it's gonna match, all of that is, or later, some of the design standards. Okay. I don't...
It's still pretty close. Even if you say at 12 feet or, or at, uh, sorry, 18 feet and it comes out like this, it's not gonna go to a one-car. You're still pretty dang close to 45% of the lot. 'Cause to get like, you know, 45% of 25, eight, that's gonna be like 12. It's gonna be like, so even if it's 18 up here and it comes down to nine, you're, I mean, you're still there. You're still too big. Not to mention, there probably is a way to put parking in the back.
On the drive down the side.
No, you don't want to do that. You gotta... So you're 25.18 and a driveway can be 45% or the driveway can be 55%?
Could be 45%.
Okay, so 10.45. You're at 11.33. You do get administrative approval, 10%. You're at 12 and a half feet, which is ample for a one-car garage. You have one in the garage, you have one in the driveway.
Are they one-car garages?
No, but that's not what's being applied for today, though, is the, the architectural drawings.
It's the, it's the subdivision.
The application is, is for the 10 parcels. But I mean, we could do a one, preferably you do a two-car garage and you have two inside and you, but if you can't and you do a one and you just do like other places have done around Pocatello.
But the second space is the driveway.
Right. Or you do a double deep or something, like, there's options. No, you don't, you're supposed, so you're supposed to have two off-street.
Okay.
So that's, I think we're okay.
We could, uh, we could ask them for a plan that shows the footprint. So if there's any question with regards to how it fits in the code, we can ask them for a plan to show us, okay, you meet setbacks, you meet the minimum driveway widths, you meet 45%. So...
Yeah, because you're not allowed to park in setbacks, right?
No.
Because it looks like the setback here, so they would need 18 feet of driveway outside of the garage and it doesn't look like...
Your driveway can be in a setback, it's structured.
Well, this, this structure.
But you can't use setback room for parking.
Yes, you can.
Really?
Okay. So, if this preliminary plat divides us into five lots, how does that affect what you were just talking about?
So, you could make, you could put a condition on, on there that says that we, that you need to show the footprint and that you need to meet those requirements before it goes final plat.
Approve it.
Show us the footprint.
As long as it meets all of those requirements.
Yep, under code.
And so if it didn't, they'd be back at square one.
Yep. Then it probably, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was my question. 'Cause I'm with you. I don't want him to, us to approve something he can't possibly build.
Yeah.
Was this neighborhood built in like the 2000s?
I think it varies, yeah.
So...
It does, it does seem odd that when everything was plotted and built, they, nobody got infill standards, but now that there's one lot in the middle of it...
Yeah, but we're not here to rewrite code tonight.
That's not, this is what, this is what's allowed under code. So, as far as it matching, so discussion, as far as it matching the rest of the area, it is denser, but that's allowed under code. Um, the parking is a big issue for me, 'cause I understand, I understand about that. Um, and I will say this, actually, having a lot of cars on the street makes people drive slower and it makes your street safer. No, it does, that's one of the things, because you have to move, you have to drive slower. When you have wide streets, people go really fast.
Well, most accidents happen under 25 miles an hour.
Yeah. Anyway, um, the, I, so I think this is allowed under our code, regardless of what infill is supposed to do philosophically. Our infill does this. And this meets our current code. Okay? So, which is what we're supposed to find for. We can add a condition on there to show how parking is going to match. There's already restrictions on how tall this can be. So, I think the other concerns, this, this concern about the parking and how they're gonna fit that in is my biggest one. But if we add that as a condition, um, I think the rest of it, it meets the rest of the terms that's required under code, our code.
Except for D, which is parking area shall be located behind the buildings, which would require dropping a unit.
It doesn't say required.
Whenever possible.
Whenever possible.
Well, I, I could get plenty, I could make parking behind these buildings plenty possible if I cram units through all the access points. I mean, we've seen, like, there are plenty of subdivisions around town where you can see a common driveway going this way and then pulling into garages on the back. Like, sure, it's not possible if you build there, but if you don't build there, it is very much possible. Just because you can have so many units per landmass doesn't mean that it makes sense.
So, but that can be part of the condition. I mean, they could fit back there. They, he could draw it so that they all park in the backyard and there's no backyard.
Then he would be compliant with every single aspect of the code.
Yes.
And if he's gonna get infill in a neighborhood like this, he probably should be compliant with every aspect of the code. Like, it's, it's possible unless you make it impossible. That's my, that's my only point.
Yeah.
There's plenty of land there to do that.
Just to be clear, he doesn't have to be compliant with every single aspect of the code. No one's making him do that, other than us, if we decide to make him do that.
Well, this is, these are the standards. If you want the reduction and everything set out for infill, these are the five things you need to meet. Right? If you want to build, it needs to match everything nearby. If you want, if you want to do it, there has to be trees. If you want to have parking, it needs to be behind the buildings. This is what it lays out.
If I understand code correctly, though, he only has to meet, is it two?
This isn't, this isn't even the options. This is just the standard.
These are the standards for infill.
I got it.
And so, but that, putting a condition in to show the footprint, the parking requirements under code before it goes to final plat would address that as well. And would give him an opportunity to redraw this so that the parking is behind, behind the area. I'm, I'm with you. There, we need more affordable housing, I, I get that. And we build way too many ginormous homes and not enough homes for starter families. But, um, this, if it's gonna have infill, then we should try to make it match the standards for infill. And that means taking a closer look at the parking. So, I am going to make a motion. If everybody's done discussing, which I'm kind of done discussing, because... I move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat application by Taylor Wood slash Residential Development Two LLC, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions listed in the staff report and an additional condition that the applicant will have to show the footprint and parking requirements under code before going to final plat. I also authorize the chair to find the findings, to sign the findings of fact. I get that right? No second?
I think we should specifically cite section D. That's the motion I would second.
I think staff's gonna know.
Well, well, maybe. I mean, they already approved it to bring it up here, so...
What, do you need navigation? I forget. I didn't hear it all.
Do we, so, for with my motion, he holds that we should specifically call out that this should adhere to whatever it is, D, and try and locate the parking behind the building.
I don't think he can do that.
Okay, just try, he could draw however he, whatever, okay. Um, calling that out, if we ask the code to, for this to match code, you're gonna look at each of those and try and meet those, if possible. I mean, that's what my condition does.
Okay.
Show the footprint and parking requirements under code before going to final plat.
Yeah. So the other option...
There's another option.
The other option you could do...
Deny it and have him...
Is you could, you could postpone it. Have, have the applicant go ahead and, and do that and then you bring it back. Just do it on, for a date certain.
There's no way he's getting parking in the back with five units.
Not with five units.
That's, that's what I'm saying, so we...
All right, I need to know that there's gonna be parking. I just have to know.
But with four units, he could.
I, 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 nobody's gonna, don't, yeah, okay.
Is there...
So I want to change my motion. I move that we, is it tabled, do we call it tabling?
Postpone.
Postpone a decision on this until we see...
To...
Something.
To a date cert.
To a date, to, it's 11 flipping o'clock. I need you to tell me what to say. I move that we postpone...
To, to your next, to the next planning and zoning...
Planning and zoning meeting, okay. I move that we postpone a decision on this agenda item.
To the next available.
To the next planning and zoning meeting with the condition that the applicant bring a plan showing how parking requirements are going to be met for his subdivision.
Second.
Um, I thought it had to be specified date.
The next, what's the next planning and zoning meeting?
If there's a special one, that's not gonna give him time to do it, so he...
Okay, so when's our regularly scheduled planning and zoning meeting is when? Aislinn?
It'll be a month from today, right?
That's gonna be...
I don't know, it's really late. It's really late.
It's 11 o'clock.
It is.
It's gonna be as...
Okay, so postpone our decision to May 11th, 2022. Okay? I'm happy.
Second.
We have a motion by Hewlett, a second by, by Worrell. Aislinn, will you call vote?
My desk, I'm almost...
Dewlitt?
Yes.
Worrell?
Yes.
Chando?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Rue?
No.
Can we give the applicant an opportunity to speak? It seems like he's had something, I don't know if he's had a change of mind, I don't know if, and obviously, we can't be here all night just letting everyone take turns, but was there something that you had, maybe an alternative?
Yeah, so her...
Okay, we have to hang on a second. We went so long that the recording system shut down.
Oh, man.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing snacks.
Not to bribe us, though, right?
I, I do the same thing and I wasn't allowed.
Weren't you in, in OTO though, Dakota?
Yes, but it didn't apply. We found out that that code didn't even exist in here.
What?
It didn't apply. It doesn't matter.
Okay, we're starting.
Okay.
Briefly.
Okay.
Briefly, so the code mandates that there be two off-street parking spots, okay? By having a single car garage, you have one in the garage and you have one on the driveway, okay? The width on these lots is 25.18, okay? The code mandates that it be 40%. So you multiply that by .4 and you have 10.072. Amples face if you need nine feet. So what I'm saying is if we said in our motion that it be a single car garage with a driveway that fits that code, then we would have two off-street parking spots that would fit the requirements. And that is, that, that fits the code. That satisfies the code. 25.18 times .4. And even if that's without administrative adjustments, you could go up to 11 feet and that should be totally fine. Okay, thanks.
It still just doesn't put them behind the building.
Our job as a planning and zoning commission is to determine not the merit of a project, but the legality of an issue from a planning and zoning develop and then make a recommendation for that to be sent to a higher authority who can then decide on the merit. With that in mind, I think that if ever there were a situation where maybe the wording in there wherever possible might apply, I think in my opinion, this is it. I wouldn't, I don't know what I, I can say here. I understand there's a lot of concerns about how these units will fit into a neighborhood. As I drive through that neighborhood, to me, it is all multi-family housing. And so whether you see two units connected or whether you see five units connected from a planning and zoning commission, I don't know if that's enough of an issue to give me pause. Additionally, and this is maybe me stepping and taking my planning and zoning hat off for a moment, but I would invite anyone who is concerned to drive down 10th Street and look at Taylor Wood's last project and tell me if you don't think that has raised the property values in that development. With that, I'm going to make a motion. Heavens, if.
Infill's supposed to be for affordable housing. If we look on 10th, we see.
We've already discussed that. Let's.
Maybe I'm gonna make a motion. Motion to recommend, I am going to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat from Taylor Wood slash ResDev Two LLC, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter, chapter 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions listed in the staff report and sign the, and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
I need a second or a different motion.
Well, it seems like we're divided and there's at least one person here who feels they're in between those two motions. So what's the compromise here? I mean, infill, it says specifically to qualify infill, it's to promote affordable housing. You look at 10th, 360, I think the last one listed, 389 a house. It's not affordable. It also says parking needs behind, be behind the building wherever possible. It could be possible, just with this plan, it's not.
I would be willing to consider kind of postponing this.
Okay, let's postpone it.
I think, I think, I'm just conflicted. I think just, I know the code says that, but that's not how infill's supposed to be applied. So basically, we're looking at a fault in code. We're looking at kind of imperfections in code. And then we're kind of saying that, okay, we're gonna apply this code, although it's imperfect and it's not supposed to apply to the situation, but the consequences you guys have to burden. And that makes no sense to me.
So postpone for what?
I gotta say, like.
We're gonna have to postpone to revisit code.
Yeah, I would like to postpone and basically see how they kind of play with the code. Because this is clearly loophole in the code.
So just reread your original motion. If we can, so we can go home.
I've wrote it down. I'm not making that motion again.
We still have one more agenda item.
I know. I'm worried about.
You have it written down?
I do. I think he can make it work.
I moved.
This and then this condition. This is a condition.
So there's your criteria for.
Oh, I meant the, the one to postpone it.
I don't have that one. But postpone to do what? You gotta.
I make a motion to postpone this agenda item, which is, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Oh, that item.
Agenda item number eight until our next regularly scheduled.
Which is May 11th.
May 11th. Planning and zoning commission meeting.
I know it's second to that motion.
Aislinn, we have, we have a motion by Worrell and a second by Rue. Aislinn, will you call?
Yes.
Rue?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Hewlett?
Yes.
Hewlett?
Yes.
Taylor, I think you can make it work. All right. Last item. I want, I want to see how you make it work. Let's put it that way.
Agenda item number nine is public hearing for preliminary plat Stratton Estates Division Three, File 22-542. Can you guys go please talk in the hall?
Yes, we still have our.
Can you guys please go talk in the hallway? We have another agenda item. Ma'am? We're trying to do our next agenda item. Homes West is represented by RMES has submitted a preliminary plat application to subdivide 4.3 acres more or less into 22 lots. Their proposed subdivision is located east of Troy Lane and west of Hawthorne Road. I now declare the public hearing open and I would invite the applicant to come forward.
Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you for having me. I'm Sean O'Brien with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, representing our applicant, Homes West, Inc. We are talking today about the third division of Stratton Estates. We've had a very successful first division. We're wrapping up the plat on the second division and this is now our third division. It is an exciting 22 townhome lots. We are extending Troy Lane to our east perimeter boundary line and also providing another access to our south perimeter boundary line. Our neighbor to the south has agreed to provide a, an emergency access route. And the way we've got this road laid out, we are providing for future extension of utilities should the adjoining properties decide to develop. Once again, two, 22 townhome lots. I don't want to say infill and.
So they granted.
Wait, let's let him finish first.
Go ahead.
That's it. I can answer any questions.
So the, the access that they provided, this says it's emergency access, so it's not gonna be a street.
That is correct.
Okay.
I won't even know if I have what you're looking at.
Well, I'm try, I tried to figure out, it's not, we got this.
It's in your right hand on the back.
Oh, thank you. I'm.
It's late.
Brain dead.
Do you, does staff have a, I need, I, it's probably not a question for you, to be honest. It's probably a question for staff. Does it show some map?
Okay. Does any, commission, do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. I would like to invite staff to come forward. Wake up, wake up, Carl.
Just one moment, please. Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Carl Anderson, again, City Pocatello Senior Planner. The applicant tonight is Homes West, Inc., represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. The applicant, the property in question, or the request before you tonight is a preliminary plat approval for the Stratton Estates Division Three subdivision. The proposal calls for the plotting of 4.3 acres into 22 lots. This proposed subdivision is generally located east of Troy Lane and west of Hawthorne Road. The subject property is a residential medium density, single family. The minimum lot size for a single family dwelling in the RMS zoning district is 5,000 square feet and 4,000 square feet for a townhome dwelling. So the smallest lot proposed is 6,255 square feet. Should the applicant choose to construct a single family home in place of a townhome, be advised that the proposed dimension of lot 19 block one may create a challenge for building a single family home. That means the setback requirements on a corner lot. However, if it's a townhome, as the applicant stated, that's their intent, they can build the side yard to the property line as a townhome would be and the corner side would be 15. But that's something they should be aware of as they move forward with that. I placed the plat up here. As, as you can see, this is the continuation of Troy Lane through here. Stubbed to the eastmost property line. It's rather tough to see. There are still, I believe, one property, maybe two properties between the, the connection of this property and Hawthorne Road. And additionally, to meet fire's requirement for when there are 30 units or more for secondary access, that's what the signed letter in your packet is for. Also.
Is that that road that comes off?
That's kind of this dotted line easement through here, where this is kind of stubbed here. That's addressed in the Public Works Condition, I believe it's condition number five in that first section there. I will let the engineering department speak to that further if there are more questions regarding that. This was noted for a public hearing. No written comment has been received. We did receive one phone call, or a phone call from an adjacent property owner between them and Hawthorne Road, whose name escapes me. Staff is recommending approval of the proposal with conditions in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
I have a question. Should we go back to the map? Because I was trying to figure this out. So that stubbed road that goes off to the right, that, is it, the plan is to connect that at some point or is it just a, should it be a turnaround? I'm trying to figure out why it's stubbed there and ends, because there's no road on the other side of that.
Code says to be able to stub, so yes, it is planned, but future connection could be achieved.
Okay.
Right now, it's not required other than over 30 units by fire for a secondary emergency access. We know that things are always changing and, and the way this is stubbed out so that we could go to Kinghorn, there is some options there and there's some options to go over to Hawthorne. And I've had conversations with the property owner that called, as Carl made mention about a week ago and discussed with him and, and he understands the plan now. He, and going forward, so that's, that's what they're stubbed out for. There doesn't have to be a turnaround because the way the roads are stubbed meet the.
Meets that.
Meets that turnaround requirements for fire and it can be used there for the garbage trucks weekly and so forth, so.
Okay.
That's what it's there for.
Okay. Thank you.
Commission, any other questions for staff? No? Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony supporting the application to come forward. Anyone uncommitted to the application? Turn your light.
Dave Hendricks, 39, 31 Hawthorne, on square one, that little light spot you see there, square, that's my shop. According to what I understand is when you build something, the city has to sign off on all your dimensions and setbacks and everything. Is that correct? Okay, so I made an agreement with the city for five foot of an easement off the front. So after it was, I'm assuming surveyed by the builder, my, that property line, and as I understand from Sean, this right here is just an aerial view. So that property line right there, there, there's an issue there that we gotta take care of. I've had that back there from my original deed. The assessment on my property has grown. I've been paying taxes on that back in there, so I'm not sure how we are gonna resolve this.
Okay. So I will, I, I'm gonna say, obviously, your time's gonna go up because I'm gonna be talking, but one, it's not for us to resolve. I will tell you that it is a round image with flat lines over it, so don't take it for.
No, no, I'm not.
Exact.
I'm just.
And I'm sure Matt, I thought he was in here, does a great, no, Baker, who surveyed this? Yeah, RMES, never mind. I'm sure.
Matt's.
There is an issue, but that is something that the owner and the developer is gonna have to solve with you.
Right.
To make sure, and I would have them do it.
Right, I just figured this is a starting point to make.
Yes, it will now be on record.
Right.
It's on record that you've got.
And now, and that staff's aware they won't.
Right, and I've, I've got my original building plans and that, too, so I was just basically more questions than, than anything else, but thank you for your time and thank you for what you do.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry you had to stay so late for that.
So.
You could've watched two movies.
You can go.
You are. You're on record. Okay.
Thanks.
Where, I don't even know, was that uncommitted?
Uncommitted.
It was uncommitted.
Is there anybody else uncommitted? Is there anybody that would like to attest opposing the application? I would give the applicant a chance to rebuttal.
Thank you, and we did speak about that aerial image issue overlaid with the property lines. There is, it is difficult to map two dimensional lines over a three dimensional earth. The earth is spherical, contrary to what some people might believe. And we can certainly come out and double check where that shop is if Mr. Hendricks is interested. It's something we'd like to be, to make sure we're, we're not encroaching on anybody. So that's certainly something, if you would like to speak with us at some point afterwards.
I'm sure the city's gonna make you go and check where the shop is and make sure. I think the commission might make sure that that.
There's some legal issues with surveying on other people's land. We need permission.
Seven day letter, seven day letter is all it takes.
I can write a letter.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. Commission, how would you like to proceed?
I move that we approve the preliminary plat, that I move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat application from Homes West, INC., finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code with conditions listed in the staff report and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
Second.
We have a motion by Hewlett, a second by Worrell. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Hewlett?
Yes.
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Rue?
Yes.
We are adjourning our meeting.